I'd like to call the meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order for December Councilmember Middleton, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Here.
And Mayor Kerpinske Costa?
Present.
Could you read the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, December 16th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. This meeting will also be able to be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Could you read the next item, please?
Next item is approval of agenda.
Anybody want to do anything different to the agenda than what that we have?
Move for approval?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. What abstention?
Abstention from Councilmember Middleton. Next item, please.
The next item is special item number four. The subject is certification of the November 5, 2024 election results. And the Sacramento County voter registration and elections has provided the certification document for the November 5, 2024 general municipal election. And as a result of the election, the following council members have been elected to the city council for full four-year terms. In City Council District 1, Kelsey N. Nelson. In City Council District 3, Tim Schaefer. And staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 5, 2024, declaring the result and other such matters as provided by law. And I'd just like to note, Mayor, I have not received any public comment cards for this item.
So do we just do a motion to adopt the resolution?
Correct.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Vice Mayor Lopez Taft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have that? Next item, please.
Next item is item five, which is the swearing in of newly elected council members. Before we move on to that item, I just want to note, I did receive a public, written public comment for this item, and it is from Brett Daniels, and he states, "Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager Feeny. Tonight, I want to join everybody in extending a well-deserved congratulations to Kelsey Nelson. When I made the extremely difficult decision to leave the council, it was much relieved when Kelsey made the decision to pursue the District 1 seat. And after coming to know her very well during the process, I am convinced she will go on to be an valuable asset to the council, the city, and to those who live, work, and play in Citrus Heights. I miss all of you incredibly, especially you, Mayor Jana, and hope to see all of you soon. God bless, Citrus Heights."
Right back to him and say, "Thank you."
So now, at this time, the oath of office will be administered by myself to the newly elected council members. First, we'll begin with Councilmember-elect Tim Schaefer for District 3, followed by Council District 1, Kelsey Nelson.
So we just stay put here?
Correct. And then we'll take a brief recess.
Okay.
So if you could please join me at the podium.
Well, this is very different than the last time I was sworn in. There was nobody here.
If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tim Schaefer.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
Do I solemnly swear that I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
...that I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
...and that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will willfully and faithfully discharge...
The duties upon which...
The duties of which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And if I could please have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name. I, Kelsey Nelson. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend... Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend... ...the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California... The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California... ...against all enemies, foreign and domestic... Against all enemies, foreign and domestic... ...that I will bear true faith and allegiance... That I will bear true faith and allegiance... ...to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California... To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California... ...that I take this obligation freely... That I take this obligation freely... ...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion... Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion... ...and that I will well and faithfully... And that I will well and faithfully... ...discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you.
I think it's time for a brief recess.
Correct.
And so, can Kelsey get her little spot? Okay. I think you're right here, Kelsey, where the papers are. Brief recess time. Can we resume our meeting, please? If everybody's done with their partying? Okay, we're done partying. Next item, please. Oh, item six.
Yes, our next item is selection of mayor and vice mayor. And for the members of the city council and members of the public, the selection of mayor and vice mayor is held in December each year and is decided by a vote of the city council. So at this time, I will turn it over to the mayor and city council for discussion, nomination, or a motion for the position of mayor and vice mayor.
Turn it over to City Council.
I would like to nominate Dr. Jana Kerpinske Costa for mayor and Vice Mayor Jane Taft for vice mayor.
Second.
All those in favors, can we just say aye, or do we have to go by roll call?
You can do an audio vote.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Done.
Tell Brett now his tenure's over. Okay, so that takes care of that. Next item, please.
Was that for both mayor and vice mayor? Okay, sorry.
It's called a ticket. It's a slate. We were a slate.
So our next item is presentation number seven, League of California Cities' Presentation of Helen Putnam Award for Excellence to the City of Citrus Heights, recognizing the city's beautification program.
Good evening, Mayor Kerpinske Costa and council members. My name is Charles Anderson. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the Sacramento Valley Division of the League of California Cities. Thank you for allowing me to present the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence to the City of Citrus Heights this evening. Before presenting this award, I will briefly explain the significance of the person the award is named for. Who was Helen Putnam? Helen Putnam was a mother, schoolteacher, principal, mayor, and county supervisor. But most of all, Helen Putnam was a person who viewed meeting one's potential as the measure of success. Excellence to Helen Putnam was shown by someone who did their very best. She was as supportive and loving of the people who did their best as she was of the people who did the best. To the League of California Cities, Helen Putnam defined excellence. The award for excellence is given in her memory. Established in 1982 by the League of California Cities, the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence recognizes outstanding achievements by California cities. The Helen Putnam Award for Excellence is awarded each year in 12 categories to cities that incorporate innovative solutions to community needs or improves efficiency in the delivery of services. For 2024, I present the Helen Putnam Award in the category Public Works Infrastructure Transportation to the City of Citrus Heights for its Citrus Heights Beautification Crew and Carers Campaign. In recent years, the community of Citrus Heights has experienced an increase in general blight and illegal camps, both in the public right-of-way and on private properties. As the City of Citrus Heights emerged from the pandemic in mid-2022, leadership engaged in over 100 listening sessions to identify community priorities and provide clarity of mission for strategic planning. Data showed that the Citrus Heights community prioritized community image, including blight abatement and homeless prevention. Staff issued a community sentiment survey that showed a strong desire to obey illegal camps, clean up litter, and address illegal dumping affecting the public right-of-way and transportation network. While this challenge is not unique to Citrus Heights, the approach the City of Citrus Heights has taken in response to these issues affecting its residents and businesses, quality of life is uncommon. The negative impacts of the blight and overall community and its transportation infrastructure necessitated action by the city beyond the routine maintenance provided by its General Services Department. Additionally, the challenge is extended beyond the city's infrastructure and into transportation and recreational facilities owned and operated by the city's partners, such as Caltrans, Sacramento County Library, and Sunrise Recreation and Park District. It became apparent that resources devoted to staff and the community would be necessary to address the issues from different angles proactively and would require collaboration across the organization. From here, the city developed a strategic, multifaceted, yet laser-focused pilot program through implementation of a citywide beautification program, which utilizes a beautification crew that proactively patrols and responds to service requests submitted by the community. This, combined with an education campaign, user-friendly service request programs, and enrolling media outreach effort, has made a phenomenal difference in the city's image and engaged the community in a way that inspires reporting as well as community pride and ownership. While the primary focus of this program is to address unsightly material and belongings in the public's view and keep public infrastructure safe and accessible, it also aims to inspire property owners and residents alike to take the initiative as members of the community to invest in their own properties, improve the appearance of their yards to benefit their neighborhoods, and encourage ways to take part in the campaign through organized community cleanup efforts. Congratulations to the City of Citrus Heights for this outstanding achievement.
And Mayor and Council, we just have the brief video about the program as well that I'll play.
Citrus Heights launched a beautification program to address increasing blight and illegal camps. The beautification crew proactively cleans up public spaces and responds swiftly to service requests. City departments collaborate with the crew to ensure a coordinated response. In its first year, the crew removed over 79 tons of debris. This significantly improved public infrastructure and quality of life for residents. This relatively small investment has had big impacts on community pride and ownership in Citrus Heights.
Okay, and now I'd like, I believe there's some staff here that did the program, and then also if the council would like to come down for a photo?
Yeah, absolutely. We can invite our staff members that are involved with the beautification crew and the carers campaign up front, please.
I think they want us, too. They want us?
I think we might just be taking like two steps back from this.
Now that we're all here.
Or a roost, I guess.
Make him take me a fresh picture.
What are we doing? Smile? I want to thank the League for recognizing our city for the hard work that we do. It's nice when you're recognized for the hard work that you do, as opposed to doing hard work and not getting recognized. I don't know what else to say, other than if anyone else has comments, now's a good time to do it.
No, very proud moment, was down in Long Beach for that. It was great.
It's a big deal to get the Helen Putnam.
Yeah, and just as the, at that time, I was the president of the Sacramento Valley Division, and it was a huge honor to be able to say that Citrus Heights was leading the way in Sacramento County. And that our valley has 58 cities or something, it's huge. It goes all the way to the Oregon border, and for us to get chosen for our work is an amazing accomplishment.
Vice Mayor, anything?
Well, we're very, very proud of our efforts. You know, this is something that is so unique, and what I really enjoyed seeing was everyone coming up to our staff, because we do have tables at this event, and asking, "How did we do that? How did we set that up?" You know, that was one of the most innovative ways we used money from the COVID federal dollars, and so we are very, very proud of our team.
New Councilmember Nelson, you have something to say?
Thank you, yes. This program is amazing. I use it frequently, and I'm proud that we have it in our city.
I've been approached by people not in Citrus Heights that say, "Hey, I've driven through Citrus Heights and how clean it looks." And I know we still have some issues with some hotspots, but overall, I think our city is so much better. And if you were here back when we became a city, what a night and day it is. And even in the last couple of years, it's changed since we started this beautification program and went all out to collect those 92 tons or whatever it is. I'm exhausted from all that. Okay. So does there any public comment on this item? Anybody want to get up and say, "Yay, Citrus Heights"? Okay. Well, thank you so much, League of Cities. And for our next item, please.
Our next item is public comment. If you wish to address the city council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And Mayor, I do have one written public comment for this portion of the meeting, and I also have written comment for items number 15 and 16, which I will read when the council gets to those items.
Do you want to read the general comment first, please?
Sure.
And then I'll, I have one speaker sheet, but you can start with your guy.
Sure. This public comment is from Alfred Sanchez, and he states, "I wish to say happy holidays to the council, everyone at this meeting, and those watching on YouTube. National Homeless Persons Memorial Day is coming December 21st on winter solstice, the longest night of the year. We will be gathering once again to remember and pay tribute to those who passed away while homeless, not just in Citrus Heights, but all over America. This will be our sixth annual memorial vigil, and we meet at Alberto's Restaurant, 6171 Greenback Lane at 7:00 p.m."
And I have one general comment from David Shelton. You're up, David.
I thought you were going to read the comments.
No, I don't have your comment. I just have your speaker sheet.
Our name is David Shelton. Councilmembers, new mayor and vice mayor, thank you for giving me this time. This is probably the most emotional presentation I will make to this group.
You need to put the microphone closer, too, so we can hear you better.
I will speak louder.
That's good.
I grew up in Salt Lake City, Utah. My dad was an automobile mechanic. My mother stayed home with the four kids. Dad repaired wrecked police cars and did city vehicle maintenance. I helped him before he took the test for the fire department, including jumping the garden hose on the front lawn so he could pass the physical. Never once in my growing up years, as he worked for the fire department, did I consider that one day he may not come home due to an injury. I met my wife Nancy the first quarter of my college journey. We were married with one daughter before I graduated in 1967. We lost our second daughter drowning in an accident at our summer cabin, so I know what it's like to lose someone you love. Nancy took the Citrus Heights Police Academy for Residents program, an exposure to which is what the police do for us and how they do it. However, she did not take the walking tour of Folsom Prison. Today, what is critical to our safety and well-being is the police department. The founders of our city with vision offered Citrus Heights Police to take a one-month, a-year sabbatical to spend time with their family and enhance the marriage ties with them. This is hard for me. One day, they may not come home. We as citizens must take care of our police department. There are two issues on my mind. First, fireworks burning down my house. Police tell me they can't do anything because it's hard to do. Well, anything is hard to do. I have leaned on our police officer arranged ride-along, and I witnessed firsthand what people's problems presented are to our police during their workday. Domestic disturbance is hard to resolve, but police try. However, over the last 20 years, we have lost problem-oriented policing theme in our law enforcement. Only we spend time putting people in jail, only to have them released, sometimes in the same day, to return to the same repeat action. Don't try to tell me that that action is not hard, because it is hard. The California Highway Patrol has a drone program to control speeding by drivers that drive 85 and 90 miles an hour on our freeways, and sometimes on our 40 and 45 mile, on our city streets, they drive as fast. Those drones even return to base, replenish their batteries, and return to service without any CHP assistance. It seems to me that we could use some of that technology to control fireworks and the coming dung discharges that come during New Year's celebration. A bullet that goes up comes down, just like a firework that goes up comes down. Both are capable of serious property damage and killing one of us. My second issue is the unserved quality of life exposures are all around us. An electric scooter driven like a car is a new issue that can cause death. We have a 13-year-old child with a scooter that rides at full throttle nearly 30 miles an hour. He does not wear a helmet or protective clothing and doesn't slow down at blind intersections such as Cantel and Brookcrest Way. If he meets a large truck or small automobile, he may not come home but get an extended hospital stay or a granite tombstone over his six feet of dirt. Motorbikes drive on our sidewalks, and it is at traffic speeds that they drive. We need to do something. I don't want to be the one to call 911 and report a child lying in the street or under a large truck needing help. At our Neighborhood Watch Meeting, one attendee lived next door to the 13-year-old, and she said, "I'll talk to his mother." The child and scooter have not been seen, so maybe a life was saved. The pain stopped this rioting. The rains may have stopped the rider. A pop officer could have solved this hard problem with one responsive visit to the mother. We need pop officers and their programs back again. Thank you for granting me this five minutes of your time.
Thank you, David. Are there any other public speaking foreign topics not on the agenda? Okay. Do you have any more for not on the agenda topics?
Not at this time.
Okay, next item, then.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
You don't have any. All right. We'll start with, we'll go to you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It's been busy. Of course, we've been, the last time we met was November 14th, so it's been about three and a half weeks. So on the 18th, I had an RT board meeting. It was just kind of normal business on that day. And then on the 20th, so for Sacramento RT, I represent Sacramento RT on the Capitol Corridor. This is the Amtrak train goes from Roseville down to Fremont. There's a number of cities all along the way that are represented there. This particular meeting, I tuned in on Zoom because it was held at the BART headquarters in Oakland, and I didn't really want to drive all the way down there for this meeting. Very controversial, actually, and this is, what the plan is, is to streamline that, add a new track. So we'll have an additional train coming out of Roseville per day. Right now, there's only one per day coming through Roseville. But it's 17-mile stretch where UP actually owns the track. They are, they use the track for freight primarily, and this will streamline passenger rail away from the freight. But unfortunately, in order to do this, the City of Hayward gets bypassed, where they're not currently bypassed. There are lots of people really upset about that, really upset about having to drive to the train station in Newark, which isn't that far, but nonetheless, it's less convenient. We did adopt the, they did a full environmental impact report for building the station and for moving the track, but we're still years away from actually breaking ground on any of this. So it was a very involved meeting. Lots of, lots of folks were understandably upset about it, but we did... But we did adopt the EIR, and we moved the process forward to the next step, so. I was on the 20th, on the 21st, I spoke with my local Park Oaks neighborhood area, and I was a guest speaker there. Really enjoyed that, that time. Really get to know my neighbors. I knew them before, but this is a, I got to really encounter them on a more official basis. And then on the second, we had a SAACOG, Policy and Innovation Committee meeting. That's where we talked about, we talk about really things that are coming, coming down the pike. And if you don't have the sense of it now, for the state of California, cars are the enemy. Anybody who drives an automobile is the enemy. So, you're going to see a lot more restrictions, a lot more expense involved in driving an automobile, especially if that automobile gets less than 20 miles to the gallon. More to come on that. And on the fifth, Lakewood Village had a, I was delighted to attend. It's my first time attending. They have a teddy bear luncheon where they actually collect really nice teddy bears, a whole, just a lot of them. They donate to the police department so that when the police officers encounter a small child involved in a, some kind of situation, they, they can present a teddy bear to the child, make the teddy, the child feel a little more at home, a little more comfortable. So, it was really a nice, the food was great there. Really just an amazing event. Then on that same night, I attended the tree lighting here. What a well-attended event that was. It was really, really a nice time. And then on the ninth, I had another RT board meeting where we talked about health benefits for RT employees, and we, we adopted a new, a new program for the coming year. And then today, this morning for lunch, we hadn't had a chance to talk for a long time, and so I had a really great lunch with Ash. And it was, it was really, we got to share a lot of information that we had really missed. So, used to meet with Ash every single week when I was mayor, and.
Oh, do that. I should do that.
Well, it's lunch. Well, we used to have breakfast with Ash. So, anyway, so it was great. So, that, that wraps it up for me. Thanks, Mayor.
You've been busy for a holiday week month. Councilmember Middleton, you been up to anything?
Well, nothing since the last meeting I attended. I did take a short break and much needed for myself. And just on a personal note, with the holidays being around, I lost two people close to me. I lost my father-in-law and my grandfather within the span of 30 days. So, I just want to remind people with the holidays being around to appreciate your loved ones, make sure you stay in touch, and to really remember what the season is about. And, you know, just be minded that one day, that Thanksgiving or that Christmas might be that last one.
That's true. Vice Mayor?
All right. I've, I've attended a lot of meetings as well, so I'll just give you the highlights, starting with the most recent. Attended my SAC library board meeting. Very excited around the library because there was the passage of Measure E with our last selection, and that is a parcel tax that will eventually add up to $9.6 million being used for library services. If you have not gone to our libraries, it is not just books. You can, you can rent things. You can rent a mixer. You can rent a lawnmower. So, it's very, very exciting to be part of the library at this time. And, you know, the libraries, just like any other facility, have needs for support, ongoing maintenance, et cetera, and this parcel tax will really help. The other very important thing I attended was the 2024 Sacramento Continuum of Care Annual Meeting, and this is all about homelessness and the study of homelessness in our greater Sacramento community. And it was really neat to go to meet homeless, formerly homeless, service providers, individuals who are working with individuals to get them into homes housed, get them mental health services, et cetera. What I was dismayed about, and I'm going to say this out loud for the recording, is that although this affects all of our communities, only myself and another elected official attended the meeting. To me, that is, this was the most important meeting that we should listen to. What is going on with our homeless? Who is there to help? And how can we continue to help? And so, that was an important meeting. As well as, I also attended on the 21st the San Juan Unified School District's Community Partnership, very similar to the homeless gathering. It's a bunch of individuals and organizations that serve our school and family communities and thinking of different ways to make our school communities better, safer, higher degree of education and community within the schools. And so, it's really neat to be part of meetings where they're talking about how can we improve relationships within the schools, within the families that make up the school, and be more effective delivering high levels of quality education. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I said one more thing.
He's got a postscript.
I'm reminded by somebody who, who came to me and said, "What does SAACOG mean? We keep talking about SAACOG." SAACOG is Sacramento Area Council of Governments. This is 26 cities and 31 board members. So, it's a, it's a pretty big deal. It's regional, goes for seven counties. So, that's what SAACOG is.
It's a big table that they sit around, too.
It's a big table.
I agree that it has been slow. STA canceled, they had a meeting, then they canceled the next one. So, there's been two STA meetings since our last council meeting, and I didn't attend the other one because it was the same day as State of the City. And our city manager and myself gave a rundown of everything our city has done for 2024, and we were very proud of our presentation. We think we did a good job. You can watch it on our city website if you missed it. I did go to a lunch at SMUD for elected women. It's kind of boring, but it was, it was well-intended. I think the ladies who were our speakers was, had a love your job. But, you know, it's, Mark Twain ever said, "If you're doing something you love to do, you never work a day in your life." So, it was, speaking to the choir, so that's the way I was. I did attend the teddy bear lunch, and there are a lot of teddy bears. I even brought a teddy bear, my favorite teddy bear. I gave it up. And then we, I don't have my glasses on. Then we did the tree lighting, and I just want to say thank you to all the people who sang me "Happy Birthday." I went home, and I just about cried when I had the reminiscence of everybody singing. My husband said even the little kids were singing. And it was, and the band played "Happy Birthday." And I just want to thank everybody and thank city manager for orchestrating that. And, oh, we had a sewer meeting this morning. And I will tell you that, I got to believe, you know, it was Sue Frost's last meeting, her last board meeting. And she said she serves on like 29 boards. So, it was her last meeting because she is retiring. And she said it was her favorite board is the sewer. And I can see why. And I've been there for two years. It's a very well-run district. So, one of the things we did today is, is go over our service commitment. So, when you call, if you have an issue with your sewer and you call the sewer department, we're committed to respond to you, to fix what it is, to do all this stuff. I could not believe that these are sewer levels they set before I was on the board, and now it's a report on how well, it's kind of like a report card on how well they've done. So, if they say, "Well, we're going to be responsive, and we're going to get to the, to the customer within an hour of their call," 90% of the time. They're at 98%. So, it's a very responsive in many areas. They, the service call response time, service restoration time. Customer satisfaction was 98%. That's pretty good. If we had a 98% in the city, we'd consider that excellent. I don't think it's that high, but there's always somebody complaining. But customer satisfaction for the sewer is high. And so, you know, if a sewer spills, it happens once in a while, you know, pipes burst, tree roots get in there and bust up pipes. And so, things, you know, I hate to say shit happens, but it does. And so, we, we hopefully get those spills done. And so, I'm very proud of my district. Anyways, that's was today, and that's all I have. So, with that, we'll move to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar. We have eight, which is the approval of amendments, number nine, which is the annual AB 1600 Development Fee Report, 10, which is the submission of application for Tree City USA designation, 11, updated housing rehabilitation program guidelines, 12, second reading of an ordinance adding article to Chapter 18 of the Citrus Heights Code relating to the collection of development impact fees for Measure A transportation improvements, number 13, Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, final acceptance and notice of completion, item 14, Citywide Crack Ceiling Project 2024, final acceptance and notice of completion.
Okay. I'm pulling nine, or question 10 for comment. Is there any other items anybody wants?
Can we take a separate vote on eight? Clangy tip stain.
Which one?
Item eight.
Item eight, okay. Item eight. Any other items to pull out? Okay, so I'll have a motion for 11 through 14.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Middleton, second by Councilmember Schaefer. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Separate vote on item eight.
So, item eight is, is the approval of minutes?
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain by Councilmember Middleton and by Councilmember Nelson. I knew you said that. Item number nine?
Is the annual AB 1600 Development Fee Report.
I have two questions. And I have brought these up to our city manager ahead of time, so he, if, but only like an hour or so before the meeting. So, if you don't have the answers, that's fine. But one is, the park impact fees that we collect, my question is, do they have to go to the park district? Or can we use them for, for city parks if we have such a thing as a city park?
I have pulled that agreement, and it's something we're going to need to look a little deeper into. So, I can definitely report that back to the council at a future meeting. But the idea is, we collect the park impact fees, and those are typically passed through to the district. But your question is, if we have a property and we're developing it for park-type uses, could we not use those fees here in the city? So, that's something that certainly I'll look closer at and report back. The other thing I will mention is those park impact fees. Anytime those are going to be used for any kind of purpose, the city council does approve the use of those fees.
I just wondered, because when we got the Coronado property donated, if we wanted to make it a, a city thing, if we could use those fees for that, is my question.
I think it's a great question. It's a great question. We're definitely going to get to the bottom of it and report that back.
Oh, I, I do have a, it's my understanding these park impact fees are associated with pulling a building permit, correct?
Yes.
The only time they're, they're, it's involved is when you pull a building permit to build a home or build a multifamily home or something like that.
Right. And that, that's right, Councilmember Schaefer, the, the intent with those park impact fees or any impact fees really to kind of offset the impact of new development. So, the.
It's not just new development. Even if you're remodeling and it's, and you have to get, you're still paying.
Like added space, you're adding footage, so.
Added footage, yeah.
You know, if you're, if you're adding footage, let's just say, for example, and you're adding 1,000 square feet to a home, maybe housing more people, there's often impacts associated with that. So, that's where those impact fees are used to offset those new impacts. But certainly on the Coronado piece, that's a good question.
How about school fees? We all pay, don't we pay school fees, too?
We do, yeah.
Those aren't in this group, though.
The school fees, those are, the school district collects those directly.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Okay. Okay, so that, that you can come back with. And then the other part of nine, same one, was the fire impact fees. And I know this was passed in 2022, so Councilmember Middleton and Schaefer were there. The rest of us were not. But as I look at how that money is raised and expended, it's going to a fire station in Vineyard, which is, is south as Sacramento County as you can get without going out of the county. And I'm just wondering why our fees for our developments are going to fund a fire station that far away and not staying for the fire stations that are here.
Yeah, that's something we would definitely look to get an update for you. Councilmember Middleton, did you?
My understanding is because the 522 is Metro, and it concludes, includes Vineyard. So, it covers more than just Rockland, I'm sorry, more than Rancho Cordova, Folsom.
No, it's all of the county.
Yeah. So, I mean, and Vineyard is part of their area of service. So, the money should go there because it's.
At the time that it was presented, I asked the representative from Metro Fire if Citrus Heights would realize any benefit from this particular measure, and the answer was no. So, as, as a result, I was the only one that voted no on that at that time.
Well, I, I don't know why we would fund fire stations on the other end of the county from people, I mean, I could see if they were fixing up local fire stations, remodeling, fixing, building. Anyways, this does not affect the annual report, is what I wanted to say. It was only questions that were not, do not affect the vote of the report. So, that can be voted on. Fine, I don't have a problem with that, but I just.
And Madam Mayor, one of the things that we could certainly do is the report that was associated with that item when it was adopted, a couple of years past. We can forward that to the council so you can have some background on that and have the explanation of how that fee worked, and certainly review that report and let us know if you have any questions or want to talk further about it.
Well, and I don't see that other jurisdictions are pitching in for that fire station. It's like, why are we building a fire station in Vineyard?
Rancho Cordova is the other city that's served by SAC Metro Fire. So, it's city of Citrus Heights and city of Rancho Cordova, and then the unincorporated area, which that's where Vineyard's located. But we'll definitely get that report to you, and if you'd like to review it, and then if there's some further questions or further discussion around that, we can, we can certainly.
Well, when it comes time to to writing the check, let us know.
Can I move approval on item nine?
Okay.
Do you want to wait for item ten?
Let's wait for item ten.
Okay.
Ten, I just have a comment. And I'm really glad to see that we're becoming tree, renewing our designation as Tree City. And I just want to, you know, rest assured that all of the tree funds that we collect for tree mitigation or any of the monies that we collect go to trees in Citrus Heights. And that we maintain our, we're doing a lot of tree planting along Auburn Boulevard. We've got, we are, we had, when I was on the air quality board, they did a study by, I don't know if they Googled it, but we had the highest canopy in the county. And, you know, it keeps your city cooler in the summer when you have a high tree canopy. And we had the Citrus Heights had the highest tree canopy in the county per square foot. So we may have a lot of people, but we have a lot of trees too. So I'm very proud of all our trees. And so I just want to make a comment on ten. So now you can move ten and nine and ten together.
I would like to move item nine and item ten for a vote, please. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Councilmember Nelson seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. And Madam Mayor, I didn't I didn't know if if Councilmember Nelson, if she had anything to report out as part of the reporting out for for Councilmember.
She didn't, I asked her.
Oh, you did, okay, okay, great, thank you.
I, well, thank you, City Manager Feeny. I would just like to say thank you for everybody who helped me to get elected and I'm very happy to be here to to serve the city.
Okay, great. It's this generation thing, you know? Okay, next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number fifteen. The subject is Bourbons and More Request for Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity. The recommendation is to move to approve the letter of public convenience and necessity to allow the issuance of a type twenty-one and type eighty-six alcohol license for the sale of beer, wine, spirits, and instructional tastings at the proposed liquor store located at eighty sixty-seven Greenback Lane.
Okay, this is a public hearing. And just for the benefit of the public, the process is, we hear a staff report first, then council can ask questions on the staff report. And then we will take public comment, no, no, we hear from the applicant, I'm sorry, we hear from the applicant, and then we take public comment. Is that correct, if I got that in order? And then we'll we'll do comments from council members and voting. So we open this public hearing. And we start with staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Casey Kempner, your community development director here with Assistant Planner Stephanie Louie tonight to talk about the Bourbons and More application. A letter of public convenience, or sometimes referred to P C N as a requirement when the State Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, or A B C, identifies areas that are considered over-concentrated, meaning there's more alcohol establishments than their ratio, which is based on the number of people in a particular census tract. Because it is based on population, it's not uncommon for a P C N to be required in our commercial areas because a lot of that land is not people, it's commercial uses. So it's pretty pretty common for us to see this. Most recently, especially in the marketplace, it's really common. Most recently, we had the Amazon Fresh open and they had a similar process. They actually apply for the exact same license as Bourbons and More to the sales as well as instructional tasting. For that, there was a Humley one. So that you guys do see these occasionally. It is unique. It does not go to the planning commission, it comes directly to the city council. You'll hear tonight from the applicant about why they're, why they think their business is unique based on how they operate and the products they sell. Staff did a little homework and went out to check out their location beverage, or excuse me, Bourbons and More in Roseville. And we found it pretty true that a lot of their their bourbon they sell there is higher end, higher quality. They also sell other spirits there. It wasn't like a typical liquor store, let's say, it definitely had, as you walked in the door, the the person working there started asking like, what, what do you like? What do you, what do you, what type of alcohol is your preference? And kind of guided you to to what you you might purchase there. You've received a variety of comment letters about this proposal from the community, some a lot of support from the marketplace. We've had some with concerns about impacts to the community, had some that had concerns with competition, a variety of concerns, and I know you'll hear some more tonight. A P C N is a pretty unique entitlement. Usually when you guys see entitlements that come before you, there's legal findings that have to be made to approve or deny a project. In this case, it's purely the council determining whether initial use is needed based on a convenience that it would provide for the community. With that, I will turn it over to Stephanie to give a more in-depth presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Stephanie Louie, like Casey mentioned, Assistant Planner on behalf of the Community Development Department. Tonight, I'll be providing the commission with a presentation on the Bourbons and More Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity at eight zero six seven Greenback Lane. So like Casey mentioned, a letter of public convenience and necessity, or P C N, is a part of A B C's review and issuance process for the sale of or manufacturing of alcoholic beverages. A P C N is required by A B C when a census tract is over-concentrated with establishments that sell alcohol. This is a common procedure, like Casey mentioned. If you remember back in August, the city council approved a P C N for the new Amazon Grocery Store and then Humley Beer House last year. A B C only issues licenses if it's approved by the local jurisdiction. And in this case, that determining body would be the city council. So this P C N request is for the new Bourbons and More store within the Greenback Square Shopping Center. And this request is to allow the issuance for a type twenty-one off-sale license for beer, wine, and spirits. This is typical for a liquor store or grocery store where alcohol is sold and not consumed on site. And it also includes a type eighty-six A B C license, which is for instructional tasting of beer, wine, and spirits. The type eighty-six is becoming more prevalent as more consumers like to know more about the products they are purchasing. For example, Amazon Grocery just applied and was approved for this. And then Bevmo also has this same license as well. Their hours of operation are from ten a m. to ten p m. daily. And A B C standards will be followed for alcohol sales, such as I D verification. And for the instructional tastings, all employees and supply partners who participate in these tastings will be certified with A B C's Responsible Beverage Service Training Program. So the reason for the P C N is due to an over-concentration of alcohol licenses within the location census tract. This is census tract eighty-one twenty. The census tract currently allows for two off-sale licenses, and there are currently five that are existing. A security plan and floor plan were provided by the applicant. This was reviewed by the police and they also reviewed calls for service at this location. They have no objection for the issuance of this license. We've also received a number of comments, which were provided to you, as well as a letter of support from the Sunrise Marketplace. So this slide shows the map of the existing general off-sale retail A B C licenses within census tract eighty-one twenty, which is in the yellow solid rectangle. Again, the red point shows the location of Bourbons and More. There are currently two type twenty-one licenses within that census tract, which is the liquor store up Sunrise and then the Bevmo, which is down Greenback. The other ones are for type twenty, which are the sales of beer and wine. They do not sell liquor at those locations. Since this location is at the corner of four census tracts, this map shows a broader scope of the thousand-foot radius around the current Bourbons and More location. And this shows the on-sale and off-sale retail. So we have C V S, which is in the neighboring census tract, which is in unincorporated Sacramento County, and then the liquor store across the street, which is also in a neighboring census tract. Here is the recommended motion. The applicant is here as well as staff, if there are any additional questions.
Questions for staff? Mary Jane?
Quick question. From your last slide, the wine consultant has a type forty-one liquor license. So what is the difference there?
It's a type forty-two, so that one is a restaurant license. It's for like a bar, so they can do onsite tasting and off-sale as well. So it's not the same as just a off-sale license, like the type twenty-one.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Questions? I have a question. Connect the next slide. The last slide. This one. Can you can you separate the twenty-one and the eighty-six? Or do they come as a pair?
So technically, the type eighty-six does not actually require approval for a P C N. It was just included because they were bundled together. So the type twenty-one is actually the only license that requires approval for a P C N.
Okay.
I had comments or questions, I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll save, any questions, just questions?
No, sorry, I amended, I have questions.
I'm sorry.
I have questions.
I have questions, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Say ahead, ask you questions.
Okay, what can, do you know the vacancy rate for that area, for the Greenback Square? If you don't, it's okay.
We don't know, there are a number of vacancies in that center.
Okay. And were the neighborhood associations talked to in regards to this?
They were noticed, I don't, we did not receive any comments.
No comments, okay, just wanted to make sure we checked that box. That was it.
Sorry, I didn't, and I don't have glasses on, so I can't really see you. I just want you to know that. Okay, and I did pass my eye test, got my driver's license. No, all right, so the next item is to have our applicant come up.
Respectful city mayor, vice mayor, city clerk, city manager, city attorney, and respectful, you know, council members and friends and neighbors of Citrus Heights community. My name is G O Matthews, I'm with Bourbons and More. I lived in Citrus Heights from nineteen ninety to two thousand. And I, my children went to school in Citrus Heights. I admire the new development of the city here and the progress and the growth. I'm very proud of you guys. Bourbons and More is not another liquor store. Bourbons and More is an liquor store with the A B C license, twenty-one and eighty-six instructional license. That means Bourbons and More is an instruction and educational premium bottle shop where we interact with the customers, educate customers, take them to distillery tours all over the United States of America and Mexico. And we are also planning to take people to Europe. We make appointments and tours and meetings with this, and special tasting with master distillers, master blenders, and master, you know, tasters. And then we take them and educate them at the distillery, mainly in East Coast, in Kentucky, Tennessee, Virginia, and Ohio, you name the states, we are all over. We just came back from Tennessee. Jack Daniel Distillery, Heaven's Door Distillery, and so many other distilleries, a tour of five days. And there were seven of the customers travel with us. Together with the team, we also pick a barrel or two, which they are interested in, from the premium barrels which is set aside. So that we, it's not, normally it doesn't come to this region. And we bring them specialized and that barrel bottled exclusively with our name so people can get it, a unique bottle for gifting or tasting or for themselves. We also do the process of a tour and pick up with the tequila of Vicindios in Mexico, where they can get organic, additive-free, sugar-free tequilas to come to this Sacramento region. We also arrange winery tours in Napa Valley and Paso Robles and many places where our people like to go and, you know, taste nice wines and see the things. We arrange Bourbons and More as part of our business. We invite to Sacramento region master distillers, master tasters, master blenders to meet and have a tasting time and dinner together with our customers. We have special events and tasting opportunities at our store offered by various famous distilleries at no cost to any customers. There is no purchase necessary. They'll get to know all their products and also they just, you know, explain all the process of being made. These are the opportunities mostly not provided by anyone, I say anyone, in this Sacramento region that what we are offering. Even, not even the chain stores are offering what we are offering. That's why we say we are unique. And to know more about us, you know, you can always check on the Yelp, the review, the highest review, what people are talking about. And we even got just a letter from the Yelp C E O two days ago. I mean, how much they appreciate, you know, our store as the number one in the region. We also work with the local charities. So for giving funds and donations and also raising funds for special events. And I mean, for your knowledge, recently we are working with, you know, the American Legion, which is a veterans association, building the monument wall with Paul Reyes. And I'm also very happy to notice and hear from him, the generous gift City of Citrus Heights has given them to build that. And we also plan to do more fundraising and donations for that project that is in our plans too. And that is just one example of many of the charity work we do in this region. And I mean, in in Placer County and Sacramento County, even outside of this region, we do a lot of charities because we set aside ten percent of our funds or profits, what we get, to the charity from the beginning, and that is done every day. So I am a businessman and I feel the pain of other business people because they fear competitions. But Bourbons and More is not going to compete with anybody. We do not even just go check anybody's prices or anybody's inventory or nothing like that. We rather just, you know, do our own business. But rather, we support them by bringing more discounts to this region, by bringing the companies and company executives. And when they offer these discounts, normally that discount goes to everybody because it is not just for us. Because A B C controls what prices and what, you know, products to be given, and that is open to everybody through the distributors. So in fact, we are bringing more to every business people in this region. With regards to crime, when I hear some people talking about, and we will not entertain any crime because we have full security, full camera systems, and we don't want to open late or we open, we open late and also we close early. That means, just like Stephanie said, that our hours are like ten a m. to ten p m. Maybe even might, we might shorten it because, you know, it is not our best interest to have late hours. Because we noticed most of the crimes takes later hours. And we are not a part of, you know, that we should, the stores should be open late and we keep that hours. And I wish, like some other places, all the liquor stores should have been closed at ten p m. And not even open on Sundays. I mean, those are the, some of the ways of reducing crime. That's my, just one piece of thought, okay? Our upcoming events for this month is tomorrow, we have the whole executives, so many executives of Buffalo Trace coming to our locations in the morning. Tomorrow afternoon, we have a team of Brown Foreman and Jack Daniel team coming, and they'll be at the store, Roseville and Rockland stores, if anybody wants to come and visit. And to mention a few other things, especially on Tuesday, the twelve seventeen, we have a special dinner and tasting with the world-famous master blender and the quality control of, you know, Buffalo Trace Distillery and South Rack, Drew Mayfair. And he is coming here to meet with at least fifty people, please sign beforehand. And they'll have dinner and they'll be tasting of, you know, very expensive bourbons. You know, when I say very expensive bourbons, the last creation of his is called The Last Drop Fifty-Year-Old Bourbon. And he'll be tasting at that location at that time. And there is, you know, another creation is called E H Taylor Single Barrel Barrel Proof, George T. Stack, Thomas Sandy, Weller. All these bottles are like five hundred, six hundred dollar bottles, okay? I mean, getting an opportunity for people to taste those kind of bourbons is very special, I would say. Because even for me, it's very special because I can't afford to buy that kind of bottles. And then at the store, again, we have on December nineteenth, three p m. to seven p m. We have Dalmore, Single Marscoach, and Jura coming, the company sending people over to taste all their products and also free engraving for any bottles they want to buy for their gift or for their birthday or whatever it is, it's all done for free. On twelve twenty-three, three to seven p m., we have Angels and Bee coming from Kentucky Louisville for the same tasting and also engraving. There are many more activities and opportunities weekly at Bourbons and More, and I don't have enough time to mention all that then. These are very special opportunities offered only by our connections with, you know, distilleries. And I, as I said, I'm a businessman. I see many of my business friends from Roseville, you know, Folsom and Elrado Hills. And I hope they are not the ones to making the decision for the Citrus Heights neighborhood. At the same time, I just want to generally remind them, we are not here to compete with anybody. We are here to benefit to their business and we work together with anybody. And we don't at all, you know, just here to just, you know, run a, run a business. You can check our details by the Q R code provided here from the Yelp or from the, you know, YouTube. And we have a lot of, you know, I mean, way, you can just, you know, scan it and see what we are saying because we have a highest rating in this region from all these sources of public media. And people travel from all over the United States, even from abroad to a store, to pick those special bourbons which they cannot find otherwise. And our prices are also very reasonably done because we always tell when people come, check with the Google. If you see a legit lowest price, we will match it and give it to you. So so the way we do business is totally different from, you know, everybody else. That's why we are just, you know, prominent and liked by everybody else. And Press Tribune of Roseville, I'm continuously, you know, giving us, you know, the best, the best liquor store in Placer County against, you know, the major chains. And we are getting a lot of compliments and the mayor's coming and, you know, I mean, we work with the Chamber of Commerce in Rockland and Roseville. So you can check all those details through our Instagram or wherever, you know, the public media is available about our business. Thank you very much to everyone for giving us this opportunity to discuss our business. Thank you.
Hang on, hang on a minute, does anyone have questions for our applicant?
Yes.
I've got a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions, please?
Okay, so what is the typical price range of bottles at your current locations?
A price range?
Yeah, price range.
Up to ten thousand dollars a single bottle, of course, starting with, you know, Jack Daniel, which is maybe like twenty dollars because, you know, there is some for the common people. But there is a lot of bourbons, you know, like a thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand. Because I would say we have an inventory of almost one million dollars.
Okay, my next question is, if you had to guess, what percentage of your inventory would fall into that premium luxury category?
I would say like seventy-five percent or more.
Okay. Okay. And you've already explained how your pricing is different from, from a standard, so thank you, that was all I had.
Do you have any questions? Questions?
I do. I'm wondering, do you have security at your other locations, or is it something that's just proposed for our location here?
Could you make it clear one more time, please?
Do you have security officers on staff at your other two locations?
Security?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, see, the other locations we have actually, the landlord provides, you know, the full security for open hours, and I said, we are the first one to close in that area because, I mean, we don't keep our stores open late. So we are safe, we never have no vandalism, no theft, nothing like that, and we are well secured store with the camera and the security systems and the security offered by the landlords.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes. Thank you very much for your presentation. I did visit your, your store in Roseville. Very small there, but I did go and wander around. Nobody said a word to me while I was there. So that's just my experience. I did look at your location just online in Rockland and drive out there. It looks like it's a little bit bigger. This particular location is seems a little small for like doing a tasting and hosting and all that stuff. It's also kind of subdued behind, it's behind Kellymore Paint, so that's a little bit of a concern for me just because this, it doesn't, while all of your telling us sounds great, sounds wonderful, just don't get the, that your choice of locations there is a little bit subdued, small, it's, it's really hard to, I understand what you're saying, and I, I did, I'm a, I don't drink, I have a rule, I don't drink at Ribeau at all. I drink at home. So I like tequila, so that's kind of what I was curious about tequila, yeah, it's a nice brand there, and they were reasonably priced. So that's really, I just, did you, and look at, how many other locations did you look at in Citrus Heights?
We have looked at several other locations, honestly, but, you know, one of the main thing that what we have in point is what is the rent going to be because one of the major expenses, you know? I mean, we can have beautiful places, bigger places, and, you know, I mean, outrageous rent enough you pay, it's not going to be easy for us, you know, I mean, do business because this landlord is very flexible and he's giving good TA improvements, and I think that place was sitting there vacant for, you know, quite a bit of time, and there was so much vacancy. And when we look at it now, I look at, you know, so the gross profit versus the rent, that's the ratio that we work with. If the rent doesn't meet, we don't even think about opening a store. And tell you honestly, we are also opening one in Davis, and everything that we are trying to keep within that price range of, you know, rent and the utility expenses, that way, you know, we don't add pay too much on it. So that is one of the main things, because if you open like 10,000 Schofford, somebody opens, okay, if the rent is $20,000 and other expenses are like $10,000, we don't make it, we go bankrupt. So it's a very careful analyze of, you know, how we open a business, because from the scratch we had to start, from one penny we had to start, and it goes up, goes up, and first three years, I can tell you, we will not make a dollar. After three years, we might make, and all these tours and things like that we are giving, actually, the customers pay for their travel and the lodging, we pay for the distillery tickets and the lunch and, you know, the everything like that, so it's coming out from our pocket, we don't charge them. And we have like at least 1,000 followers, you know, simply saying always on the waiting list to travel with us, wanting to go, wanting to meet, and as soon as we have, you know, a fundraiser, it's already pre-booked like that. One more thing and last thing I want to just mention to you, so I have also, you know, started a Bourbon Talk with the Fox 40 channel, and we have an episode going, and every time there is this master distiller, master blenders or anybody comes, we bring them to Fox 40 and, you know, we do a presentation which is already available for anybody to view at the Instagram, so Instagram has more clips, so we also do that one, it's called Bourbon Talk at Fox 40 channel. Any more questions, anybody?
Any more questions?
Not for me.
Okay, so next we will hear from our public speakers, public comment.
Yes.
Now, let me tell you, I have 22 speakers that want to speak.
Madam Mayor.
Am I missing something?
The applicant also sent in a video he'd like to show.
He has a video?
Yeah, if the city clerk can pull that up.
Well, Bourbon San Mor is a unique bottle shop located in Roseville, 1611 Douglas and 3101 Sunset Boulevard, you know, in Rockland.
Wow, so you got two of them?
So two of them. Yeah, it's very unique because, you know, it has a premium bottle shop within a premium bourbons, Scotch whiskies, Irish whiskies, Japanese whiskies, and tequilas, one of a kind.
Wow.
In 1897, US government passed a, you know, Borderline Bond Act to just, you know, I mean, control the moonshiners and bootleggers.
Sure.
And then they said, any bourbon that has been made has been made in the US bonded government, you know, warehouse.
Okay.
And it has to be from a single season grain, and it has to be aged minimum for four years, and also has to be bottled at 100 proof.
Okay, yeah, I see they're signed 100 proof. All of them talk about bourbon and talk about what's going on. We got a few people in here who should do, of course, Gio here with Bourbons and More, you got Rocco here, and you're kind of distributing this, and of course, we have retired Sergeant Major Vince Makala, good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Back in 2001, our Special Forces Team, our 12-man Greenberry Team was the first team selected to go into the Hender Kush Mountains, and we linked up with a war guard named General Doxton, and he had been fighting the horseback, fighting the fall bomb from horseback.
Okay.
Here is retired Sergeant Major Vince Makala signing bottles for customers at Bourbon's and More Rockland Store.
You want to start us? You want to get us going?
Sure. So I'm Ian Sturman, I'm the master distiller of the Ross and Squibb Distillery in Lawrenceburg, Indiana, and we are one of the America's oldest and largest distilleries, and we focus on high-rise bourbons and rye whiskies. We're the leading distiller of rye whiskey in the US.
My name is Tracy, I work for Heaven Hill Distilleries. Heaven Hill Distilleries were out of Kentucky, we've been around since 1935. We are the largest family-owned American distillery in the US.
Old Forrester's master taster Melissa Riff coming to Sacramento sharing her premium barrels with us for a 2025 barrel pick. A visit to Frey Ranch in Fallon, Nevada gave many of Bourbon's and more customers the opportunity to pick a barrel of premium whiskey. Here is Gio getting to chat with master distiller Fred Noe on a recent Genveen barrel pick. Here is our Rabbit Hole Distillery tour and tasting experience, learning their unique process in making whiskey. This is from one of our visits to Old Forrester in Louisville with our tasting team learning their distilling process. These are just a few examples of the many trips we have taken with our customers.
Okay, and I got more. So we have quite a few speakers, and normally our speakers are five minutes apiece, but with this many, I'm not going to cut you down as a, as a rule to two minutes, but if you could get up, say your piece, express yourself in less than five minutes, we sure would appreciate it. Otherwise, we may end up having to take a break at some point, and you'll all be sitting here waiting for us while we take our break. So let's try to get this through. Everybody, please make your comments, make them quickly, and you can ditto each other and say your piece. So the first speaker I have is Amy Sidhu, and if I pronounce your name wrong, please forgive me. Amy, you here? You're first.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to the opportunity to speak today. My name is Amy Sidhu, and I am the proud owner of In-Ngo Market, a family-owned liquor store with 80% shelf space providing premium alcohol, wine, spirits, and craft beers. We at In-Ngo Market have served this community since 2006. We went through a lengthy process, four-year process, in order to obtain a full liquor license adhering to the back then code, regulations, and guidelines in place. At our business, we have a deep commitment to provide our community with a wide selection of high-quality alcoholic beverages, including craft beers. Recently, Friday, December 6, 2024, we received an approval from the city to be able to expand sales of liquor space to the next-door suite. This space has been used as storage up till now, since we were unable to use it in the past as per restrictions from the city. This use of additional space will be a big boost in our business as it will allow us to provide more variety to our current variety of premium alcoholic beverages and craft beers. We will also be adding an instructional tasting license number 86 as more space is available. Thank you for the approval, City Planning Department. We have successfully operated a clean, no citation, no crime business to date, and have an effective security plan that has worked. I stand here to voice my strong opposition to the proposed liquor store license just 500 feet away across the street from ours. While we wholeheartedly respect entrepreneurial spirit to seek new business opportunities, I urge you to consider the long-term implications of such a decision on our city and existing businesses. Let's address market saturation. Our neighborhood currently boasts several liquor stores like Bevmo, CVS, Tony's Liquor, Us, which is in In-Ngo Market, and of course, many more. Each one of us has worked diligently and established loyal customer base and community relationship. Introducing another liquor store in such close proximity to other existing stores threatens to dilute the market, leading to oversaturation that could jeopardize other businesses. When competition is reduced to price wars, it often sacrifices the quality and personalized service that our community deserves. Moreover, the social implications of increasing the number of liquor outlets within a small proximity can be understated, cannot be understated. Greater access to alcohol correlates to alcohol-related problems like addiction, health issues, and public disturbances. Further, I urge you to consider the economic implications of this decision. The introduction of another liquor store could lead to job losses in existing establishments. If our community loses even one local store like Bevmo or maybe Us, the community will lose jobs and community investments. I ask you to reflect on the importance of supporting businesses that have been committed to our community for years, ensuring continued success and stability. We were open throughout COVID catering to the needs of the community. We do acknowledge there is no distance regulations and guidelines with the current city code when it comes to urgent care and other businesses. We understand and respect the fact that staff is presenting for approval based on current code and regulations. I personally urge the city council to look into this from a business owner perspective. Is a longtime existing business happy with their decision, and are they going to be prosperous? Will it be a sustainable business for them to continue? Lastly, I want to emphasize, let's prioritize our community's best interests over short-term gains. I implore you to consider the long-lasting effects of allowing yet another store in an already overly concentrated area. In conclusion, I respectfully ask you to deny the proposed liquor license. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and your commitment to maintaining the integrity and well-being of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Todd. You didn't write your name good enough for me to read it. Bo- Boatees? That's it, you're up. What's, how do you say your last name?
Booker, Todd Booker.
Okay.
G-O-U-G-H-T, yeah.
That's an R.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, management, I'm here to oppose PNC. There is way too much liquor stores from, on Greenback in general. You go down Greenback Lane, you see over your left, right, shore, maybe every quarter mile, there's a liquor establishment, so I'm here to oppose the PNC.
Do you live in Citrus Heights?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for being brief, yes. Next speaker is Rashan Rex.
Hi, thank you. It's Rashan Rex.
Oh, okay.
And thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff. I too have lived here pretty much my entire life on the same block for 30 years. We have an oversaturation of liquor stores as it is, and although they say it's a high-end bourbon, we're common folk. There's too many common folks in our area that don't want that there. We've already got enough in our, on our plate. We have done so well in cleaning up our areas from the homeless and all of the problems that we've had around our creeks and our little parks that we have around us. I'm here to oppose the new bourbon store. I don't think that we need it. I don't see how it's going to benefit the community or any of us that live around it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Frederick Rox.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and other council members. I'm in agreeance with my sister. I've also lived in this area my whole life. The other thing that I looked at too, when looking at their business and looking online at their websites, is they do also sell alcohol for lesser prices, and hearing that if you come to them and tell them a price at another location, they'll lower their price, send, there's too many alcohol outlets within that general area. So I agree that we don't need another. The other thing that I thought of too is if people are going there and doing taste testings, what are their rules and guidelines for when they leave their establishment? Are they required to get an Uber? Are they required to have a sober driver? We don't need more people drinking and driving in this area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Keith Tudor. Tudor. Hi, Keith.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Council. My name is Keith Tudor. I grew up in Fair Oaks, and I currently live right at the border of Citrus Heights in Fair Oaks. Went to Del Campo, not that matters. But anyway, over the years, I've seen more and more stores like this occur, and I do believe right now we're pretty saturated with that type of store. It just doesn't, kind of an unnecessary situation for the amount of people that we have currently in the area. I don't believe that it would bring any, anything positive to the community. So I'm in opposition of that, and just would like to say that it's, just doesn't really fit the community. That's what I need to tell you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is, I gotta get this down. Jessica. Jessica, how many Jessicas are out there? One? Good. How do you say your last name?
Norwood.
N-A?
N-O-R-W-O-D. So this is my first time on a city council.
Just speak close to the microphone, we'll hear you better.
So first time, city council, lived in Fair Oaks, recently moved to Citrus Heights. I'm agreeing, I don't think we need any more of that, the beautification program, seeing everything from moving from that area to here, just it's gorgeous, it just looks so much better. It makes me really proud to move to Citrus Heights. I just really don't think we need in addition to something else. I mean, let's put something else there, honestly, and it is a very small location, so I don't see how all of that would fit into that location or what that person is offering. So I'm opposing.
Thank you very much, and I really want to appreciate everybody who's making their point in less time. Brian Robertson, you got a point because I You got a point because I can read your name.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. The reason why I'm here today is because I'm in opposition of the whole situation. In my opinion, I agree with the owner. It's not even within a mile of another liquor store. You know, we have a lot of businesses around here. I grew up here. I went to high school here. I'm, I'm here for the businesses, and that is just going to make more of a, more of a hassle on people, on jobs. We're already having those problems. What, what more can we do? So like I said, at the end of the day, I agree with the business owner of In-N-GO Market, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker is Danrel Savala.
And that was Daniel Savala, Madam Mayor.
Okay, you guys have to print better.
Did I? Sorry about that. Good evening. Thank you all for being here, for allowing us to be here tonight. I believe I sent a letter and I copied most of you, and if you have, you don't have a copy of it, I have one. Does everyone have a copy of my letter there? There are, there are a bunch of issues that I have with the staff report, the, the small staff report that I was able to read just only a few hours ago. And one of the most alarming items in the staff report was, would it tie it to the general plan for diversity of a vibrant economy? I'll get to that later towards the end of my comments, but also in the staff report, it mentioned that there's no crime in the area, or the police department had no opposition to it. And yet, with just basic research and going to the website of the, of the Sunrise Marketplace, there's more than 1,600 interactions in this calendar year with transients in the area. More than 1,200 602s, which are notices of trespass that the PBID hands out. As a former director of a business district in Sacramento, I understand how critical those 602s are, and how the strains on local law enforcement can even show up to, to enforce on those 602s. And it makes it extremely difficult when you have an environment that has so much alcohol in it. And there's a problem in this community when it comes to transient activity, and as a lifelong Sacramento and currently a resident of North Highlands, we've all been to Birdcage, we've all seen in the, the historic struggles of the Sunrise Marketplace, and our hopes and our desires to see the city of Citrus Heights, see it realize its potential. And how do we get there? We certainly don't get it here with decisions like this, that, as you said, as you said, council member, a, a small store like this, it can be bourbons and more today, but in six months, if it doesn't work, you've issued them a PCN which kind of transfers over to the next owner. We're not really having a robust discussion about conditions on the alcohol license, because, again, I think the people in the public are robbed. One of the things I first did when I spread the staff report, I looked at your general plan and, and as a planning staff, and I couldn't, I tried to find things in your goals and objectives for business corridors, and the only thing I could find was business retention and recruitment. But we're having this discussion about the community and impacts of alcohol. There is no environmental justice element that the state legislature allows for some years ago under the current general plan that, that allows us to actually address things like over-concentration in places like Citrus Heights. And so we're, we're really falling short, and we're not, we're not able tonight to have a more robust conversation about what the implications of, of supporting a PCN. I am a land-use professional and an alcohol and beverage licensed professional. I do this for a living, and I can tell you certainly that one of the hardest things to do as a city and a local police department, when you have a problematic location, is to revoke a license. Tonight, what we're essentially saying with the PCN is that, hey, this, this, the police department is okay, there's no issues here. We, we can see that they're saying it's from 10 to 10, but we don't actually see the whereas clauses and the conditions on the ABC license that says on their license, they're required to close at 10. We don't see their license that they're not allowed to sell 18, the, the 50-ounce airplane shots. We don't see that they're not allowed to sell the 12-ounce cans of beer or the single-sized cans of malt liquor. We don't get to have that conversation because we're shomping short just at issuing the PCN. We should be talking about a conditional use permit for stores this small, or stores that are looking for off-sales, but we're not doing that. I urge the council to say no to this, and also look forward at finding a better way to look at over-concentration and the true impacts of alcohol. Because 1,200 602s in one year is a lot, that means you have a problem with transients in the area. And again, I have totally amount of respect for the entrepreneurial spirit and the great things that a business owner may want to do with bourbon and trying to find a niche somewhere in the marketplace, but quite frankly, this could fail in six months and it won't work. And now, but you still have a license that's transferable and a PCN that you've already granted, and it'll be Johnny's Liquor in nine months. And that discussion will be over. So with that, I thank you all for your time, and thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the items that you sent to us. Next speaker is Daniel Rosansky.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm in opposition of granting the additional liquor license. I grew up here in Fair Oaks and Citrus Heights, right on the border on Fair Oaks Boulevard, and on behalf of my family, the Rosansky family, I'm here to oppose granting of the additional liquor license. For my neighborhood, if you turn left onto Fair Oaks Boulevard, you come to Madison and Fair Oaks, there's multiple liquor stores right there. If you go right, then you hit a liquor store in In-N-GO Market, and across the street, Walgreens is selling liquor. So personally, I just don't think that we need another liquor store. Bevmo, right down the street from that, already has plenty of options available for upper-class liquor, you know, $5,000 bottles for us, if you need to be buying that. I don't really know that many people that live around me that are drinking $5,000 bottles, bottles of bourbon. So I oppose the additional liquor license. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Tummanelli.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm John Tummanelli. I'm a 34-year resident of Citrus Heights, and a lot of what I just heard, what I have to say might be redundant, but I'm just going to read some of the notes that I wrote here. Several years ago, I addressed this council on a similar matter concerning the granting of a liquor license to a corporate entity, and I opposed issuance based on the part for the same reasons I will speak of here, and that means those reasons are need and convenience, and the impact granting a license will have on some local privately-owned businesses. So I have to ask why? Where's the convenience? Where is the need? As it's already been pointed out, we're saturated here with many liquor stores in the vicinity, so adding another one just increases the problem, and I don't think most people in the area want this. I certainly don't. Okay? So again, how does granting another license address the convenience and necessity? There were a couple of comments about criminal behavior, and I'm very much aware that along the stretch of Greenback Lane, a number of crimes involved, involving people that I am friends with that own businesses there. I think this is just going to exacerbate the problem. And I also find it ironic that the location that they are choosing used to be Elliot's, if I'm right, okay? That used to sell health and wellness items as opposed to alcohol. I have nothing against Bevmo or CVS selling alcoholic beverages, but they have a competitive advantage over small businesses with general liquor licenses because their, their pricing structure and their economies of scale are there. So how do we benefit from that? And the most important question to consider is the impact that it's going to have on established privately-owned small businesses in the area. It's going to be devastating to them. People are going to lose their jobs. So stretching the soup pot ain't going to help them at all. All right? As a strong supporter of local privately-owned business, I urge you to really consider the impact your decision will have if you approve this request. This is really a decision to, to support the interests of the residents of this community and the small businesses that we all support. I urge you to turn this application down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Amma Singh.
Hi, my name is Amma Singh.
Speak right into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Amma Singh. I want to thank council. Basically think that we're oversaturated. We have too many liquor stores in the area. I actually grew up here when I was younger. I went to Sil- I actually grew up here, I went to school in Sylvan and Carriage as well. I think it's, the area is just oversaturated, access to too much liquor stores, and I think it's good if we just turn it down and don't have more access to getting more alcohol and get more alcohol streets. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Amma. Next is Novi Sidu.
Hi, council members. Thank you so much for having me. I just want to start off by saying that I strongly oppose the issuance of this liquor license. We simply don't need another alcohol store in this area. We already have multiple licensed locations nearby, including Bevmo, In-N-GO Market, and then CVS, all within a very close radius. Adding another one will only harm existing businesses, and especially ones that don't sell alcohol as well, because it causes more disturbances and disruptions in the community. The cities that, and also just, I want to point in case to other cities that have actually allowed too much oversaturation of liquor licenses, like cities like Vallejo, for example, South Sacramento, they're going through a lot of tough times, and it's not really beneficial to the community at all. And I also want to add on to the fact that they also, they're advertising higher-end liquor and things like that, but Bevmo, CVS, even In-N-GO Market, they all have very high-end liquor that if people, if people want it, they can get it. And so I don't really see a need for this in the, in the marketplace. I also want to emphasize the difference in clientele based on the people in Citrus Heights, and maybe their clientele in Rockland and Roseville or wherever it is. Everyone has different, you know, priorities, and especially in a smaller location like this in Citrus Heights, how often would they be having their tasting events and things like that at this location when they have other bigger, more established locations? And so I just don't think that's something that's actually going to happen here. And so I just, I think I oppose this license, and so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matisse Sharma. Did I?
Hattish? Hattish?
Hattish? Okay, I'll save that for the end.
One more to go.
Oh, this is Mandi- 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 She?
Mandi.
Mandi?
Mandi Singh.
By helping me read the names. Let me put it, things is, please print legibly.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mandi.
Good evening.
I oppose this liquor license. Only reason for, already have too many, too many liquor store around here. That's the reason I oppose this liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being brief. Steven Brooks. Oh, Brook. Dot the S. There he is.
First of all, Merry Christmas to everybody. Happy birthday, Lord bless all of you. I'd like to bring up, oh, Tim Schaefer brought up an interesting point, and that is, all this security cameras, criminals don't care about that. You know, you get smash and grabs, you get the high-end stuff like that, and I see a potential problem there. Now, I work at a liquor store part-time, and I know in the morning, it's, it's harming, there is harming individual families. So I would oppose it, and that's basically all I got to say. Have a blessed day, everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker is Shiv Singh Hira.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shiv Singh Hira. I'm here to oppose the liquor license because there is so many liquor store around the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lydia Ebner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councils. Thank you for having me. I oppose, I agree, the area is already very congested with liquor stores, and I don't think that's wise for our community, and it's also kind of a very hidden area, and I don't feel like it would be a big enough establishment for the tasting and for the people going to really fully enjoy the experience of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Lee, you're up.
Hello, good evening, everybody. I'm voting no for the liquor store. It's just like everyone said, it's pretty saturated in the area. Also recently, I went to eat at Mongolian BBQ, which is next door, and the windows were shattered, and they had some wood over the door, so I think having a liquor store there might make the area, you know, even worse, so I'm voting no on that.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dustin Reynolds.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Reynolds. I lived inside that circle on that map for about 14 years. As the map speaks for itself, there's plenty of alcohol locations. I don't see how adding another one right there would be of any use. So I oppose.
Thank you, Dustin. Next speaker is Amir Eetal. Eetal?
Ahmed. Hi, yes. Hi, my name is Ahmed Eetal, a respectable city mayor and council member. I'm here to oppose the issuance of new liquor license to bourbons and more. There are, as everybody said, there are already too many places in the vicinity like Bevmo and CVS, which are not even 1,500 feet apart from this new location, are already selling liquor, and there is another local liquor store and a taqueria which is also selling liquor and beer beverages. Alcohol being one of the most addicting drug, I don't think so, it's, it's, it's a good idea that our community have such an easy access to, or that much access to alcohol. I personally have suffered from my alcohol addiction, and I, that's why I strongly oppose this measure. We do, we don't need more liquor stores. We need more restaurants, we may need more, more other things, but not more. I strongly oppose this issuance of new liquor license here.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Panjik. You know who you are. You can pronounce your name when you get here, and then we'll all know what it is. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Staff, and everybody in this room. Good evening. My name is Permjit Singh Khara, and I'm speaking for myself as a retailer, and there's a lot of retailers in, behalf of a lot of retailers in Citrus Heights and nearby cities. Can I ask to, to save some time of City Council? Can I ask everybody to stand up? I'm speaking all behalf of them.
Whoa, okay. So we saving five, 10, 15, 20? Okay.
All righty, so now we're talking about why we need a PCN. So Department of ABC want PCN because we already seen, because they allow, in this census track, only two licenses. So we already have five licenses already in this area, which is already too much. And now we are requesting for the sixth one, which is, we understand, is the reason we all here, because we figure out Citrus Heights already have a lot of liquor license, especially, you know, when we see this area, especially this corner, we see three, you know, CVS in and out, and In-N-GO and Bevmo. So now we talk about a, you know, what they're doing different than other liquor stores or another retails. So my understanding, their store will be a small one, maybe 15 to 2,000 square feet only, when they have to 2,000 square feet only. When they have a very bottom within a block, Bevmo, they have a probably at least 20,000 or more square feet store. And that's where they have all the variety. My friends are saying is, you know, they have all kind of, you know, high-end liquors, wine. Those are allocation items. Those items, we are getting occasionally once in a year, and we sit on the shelf, top shelf, and hardly somebody buy it. Maybe that's in once in a year, somebody buy those bottles, you know, $2,000, $5,000. So since I'm a retailer, I am very familiar with this business. I had opened up myself one similar store with the 2186 type license. The 86 type license will only help to get more business. So we ask over, you know, like we already mentioned with the Jack Daniels, Buffalo Trace, Sazerac, you know, those companies, when we buy their product, they want to sell their product, we want to sell their product. So we ask them to help to sell that. So now is this is a new trend. Probably you will see in the future, a lot of, already a lot of retailer got the type 26. But in the future, probably more and more retailer want type 86 to promote their business, to promote their liquor. So that's, that's why they, and now they need a space for 86 in order to, they want a little bit of separate space. I'm not sure how big is, but it's, you know, the one I have, I have a 4,000 square feet. They asked me to, they need some designated place. So I'm sure they will make some kind of the space, but how much product they can carry in a small store? So that is the issue I have. They cannot compete with the bigger stores, and the normal item, the daily basis sales, and those are available at every stores. So saying this, I will say, this is not going to be any different than another stores. This is going to be ending up, you know, another liquor store with a small space. The reason is that if they sell, if they have so much confident, they could have a bigger space. Like we mentioned in earlier, there, we have a, the Amazon store opening up. Amazon Fresh. So they, they brought something different. They are not only selling alcohol, they are selling a lot of fresh produce, a lot of fresh, you know, different items. So they might be happy, only 10% or 15% of their space have alcohol. So these stores are depend on the liquor. So, you know, my request from behalf of me and my, all my fellows retailers, please do not allow this, another liquor license PCN in this location. Thank you.
Good timing. Our next speaker is. He can see better. Sarinda.
If your phone number ends in 6612.
Yeah, your phone number ends in 6612? I'll put you at the end, and we'll try it again. Next speaker is Prab Thiarah. I really apologize that I can't, the printing is, is not that clear. And probably if it was typed, I could do better, but.
Yeah, I should have done a better job writing it up. Hello to everybody. I'm opposing to this. Like everybody mentioned, we're already overcrowded, and we already, mostly convenience stores seem to get all the blame for crime and stuff. So why add another one to our area? Please try to help the existing stores. Like, you know, we would like to add smaller sizes and stuff. We are put on restrictions. But now we're thinking about allowing a brand-new store to come in and, you know, carry every single size without any issue. And that's going to be discrimination, you know, from my point of view. So I don't think there's any reason for this business to open for any kind of benefit. If they really want to go, we have Bevmo three minutes away from where they're trying to open it. They do wine tasting, and they got plenty of high-end liquor. And then maybe five minutes away, there's Beats Liquor. They also do, you know, wine tasting, and they have high-end liquor as well. So this is just, you know, overcrowding our Citrus Heights. And I was really surprised that police department's even considering it. So I oppose to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Bill Shirley, you're next.
Good evening to our new mayor and our Vice Mayor and City Council. A couple of issues. I am president of Chason, which is Area 7, 8, and 9. And this location is in Area 9. I did reach out to a number of people that were, are in our areas, and I would say the vast majority were against. Also, I mean, we've talked about the saturation, but you're missing one business which is right in that same complex, the Wine Consulting Company, which has a non-competition contract. So there should be no issue with this because they have a non-compete, and they are just about three doors down. So that's an issue I don't think that was addressed. I never heard their name come up when you were describing the different businesses that they would be in competition with. So I think that's another issue you need to look into, a non-compete contract for that particular location. Thank you.
I'm making a list. Thank you. Next speaker is Jordan Harris. Jordan Harris, are you still here? How about Stephen Fry? Stephen Uey. I'm sorry, I just can't read these names.
Stephen E. W. E. Y.
Stephen, are you here? How about Satnam Badwal? Maybe, they filled out sheets and left. Okay, back to, this is our last, we're going to go through this one last time. These are people who.
Right there.
Oh, we got some? Come on up to the microphone. Which, who are you?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Arjinder Singh, and I own Man's Liquor on Auburn Boulevard since 2005. And I like to oppose this because, you know, as you know, we have already too many liquor stores. If you drive on Auburn Boulevard, every block or every two blocks, you find people selling alcohol. And I do sell high-end bourbon. And as you mentioned, there are Buffalo Trace people from other states coming to their stores to visit their stores. And they are also coming to my store tomorrow morning. And I, I do sell those barrel pick bourbon, high-end bourbon, but they don't sell that much. To sell that high-end bourbon, you have to sell so much other stuff, which is normal liquor. You can call tacos or cheap stuff, you know, or fireball. So those kind of things, you know, I think this is just, they're trying to, I'm impressed with their presentations. They really did good job on that part, you know. So, but as I said, there's too many liquor stores on Citrus Heights. We want to have something else, like Amazon Fresh. If they come to my neighborhood, I welcome them because even this alcohol, as Mr. Kara said, they sell only 10%, 15% of alcohol, and rest of this is good for people, you know. So I strongly oppose this. Thank you very much.
Where'd you say your business is?
Man's Liquor on Auburn Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this item?
Yeah, one in the back.
Okay. Come to the podium, please, and state your name.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Satnam Badwal. I'm owner of Bourbons and More, Roseville, Rockland. And I want to talk about our business. Like, I respect everybody. I got some friends coming and opposing it. I respect everybody. I could have bring hundreds of people even from Citrus Heights. Even I had like five or six customers today came from Citrus Heights. I could tell them, hey, come and support me. Or I can bring hundreds of people from, I'm not hundreds, like 10, 20, 30 people from Rockland, Roseville, just say, oh, I want this liquor store. But it doesn't make any sense to bring people from anywhere else. And my friend, Mr. Kara just said, there's Amazon, they sell only 10% of liquor. They have 10,000 square foot store. So they are using only 1,000 square foot for the liquor. So we have like 1,800 square foot. So that means it's a sufficient place, sufficient, sufficient square footage to sell, to make it. We don't need 10,000 square foot, and which, which is useless. So we need to look at all these points. And that's all I want to say. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject? See anybody? I don't. Okay, so.
And Mayor, I do have a couple to read. If there's no members from the audience wishing, I can go ahead and read those now.
Okay, go for it.
So the first one is Sahil Babuta. And they state Bourbons and More. We already have multiple licensed locations in the area, Bevmo, In-Ngo, CVS, and many more. We don't need another alcohol store. The next one, Gurman Gurwal. Bourbons and More, no on any more liquor license, too many. How about a nice restaurant instead? And Guatom Verma, liquor license should not be approved for this store. The next one is Joe Warrez. This store should not be given a license. We have too many liquor stores in the area. The next one is Sean Jensen. We already have too many places selling alcohol in our community, and we don't want that easy access to alcohol for our kids. The next one is from David Huber. While I am a strong advocate for the development and support of new small businesses in our community, it is essential that any new additions align with the broader strategic goals and specific needs of the area. The proposed liquor store, despite its potential economic benefits, does not fit within the spirit of the Sunrise Marketplace overlay strategy. This strategy aims to cultivate a vibrant, family-friendly environment that attracts a diverse array of businesses and services, which in turn can spur long-term economic growth and community engagement. Introducing a liquor store at this location could inadvertently discourage other service-oriented and professional businesses from establishing themselves in the shopping center. These businesses are critical to the success of the Sunrise Marketplace overlay initiative as they contribute to a balanced and dynamic commercial ecosystem. Furthermore, the presence of a liquor store might attract a transient population, potentially leading to security concerns and undermining the family-friendly atmosphere we aspire to create. Instead, we should focus on attracting businesses that align with our vision for the Sunrise Marketplace overlay area. This includes educational establishments, healthcare services, retail boutiques, and dining experiences that cater to a broad demographic. By doing so, we can ensure that the shopping center becomes a cornerstone of our community, fostering both economic prosperity and a sense of belonging among residents. In conclusion, while the opening of new small businesses is vital, they must be carefully considered to ensure they support our long-term strategic goals and community values. The next is from Dave Smith, and they state, I vote no. The next is from John Smith, and they state, we already have several liquor vendors in the area. We need a nice restaurant and not more liquor licensed shops. The next one is from John Copeland. He states, we already have multiple retailers that offer liquor in the area. Adding another does not benefit the public. Please vote no for an additional liquor store. The next is from Ken Adams. I want to vote no on additional license for Bourbon and More because we don't need more liquor stores in this area. We need maybe a nice restaurant. And the last one is from Nick Powell. Not another liquor store. We already have so many businesses that sell liquor. How about a restaurant or gym? And that concludes the written public comment.
Okay. I also want to note that we had a whole pile of stuff at our deus when we got here that we hadn't had a chance to read. There's 25 in here that we did not get a chance to read because they were sitting here when we got in. So, excuse me. So I didn't have a chance to read these, and I don't know if anyone else did. But there's 25, Council Member Schaefer says, are they all opposed? All opposed, okay. Okay, the speakers raised a couple of questions that we'd like to finish asking those questions about Bill Shirley and the wine store. What's the story with that?
The wine store is actually licensed more like a bar. It's got a different type of license. So it's not the same category from ABC's perspective. They do, they do pour wine, and you can buy bottles there, I believe. But it's, it is kind of more like a bar license. In terms of the agreement with the, our non-compete agreement, that would be a private agreement that we're not privy to. But the, the store, the property owner and the broker are familiar with the CCNRs of that, and they signed off on the application. And it's not really germane to the PCN application.
Other question is, is a PCN good forever? So if, if the company leaves, another person moves in, they have it already?
There's a process ABC goes through when they change hands. The ABC has approval. We get noticed, notified of that, and we have the ability to protest that. And cities' protests do go a long ways with ABC when they make their determination.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Well, the question, so my follow-up with that would be.
Councilmember.
Thank you, thank you. My follow-up to that, Casey, would be, would we oppose it if there was, you know, if they decided, hey, this isn't working out, want to sell our liquor license to Bob's Liquors? Would, is that something, would you envision, would that, would it take an extraordinary effort for us to say, wait a second?
Well, I think we have, have that ability. The other ability we have to add some regulation to it is through the business license process. We have the business license, if approved tonight, would be based on the product description they provided. So as long as they're complying with that product description, which, you know, has the security measures and the things that generally we're concerned about, the owner doesn't necessarily matter as much. They still have to go through a process, but the business license they have to adhere to, and we can revoke that if there became a problem.
I have one other question. One of the speakers gave us a map, and it had X amount of DUIs in the area. How come that's not in the police report? Do you know that? I mean, that looks like it was downloaded from the internet.
I'm not sure. PD does their analysis based on crimes that are, I believe, more property crime-based. I'm not 100%.
They just kind of look right at that vicinity? They don't really go to the four corners of the blocks?
I'm not sure how far they go beyond the site. I think they have reporting districts. Maybe the chief can, can elaborate on how that's done more specifically.
Be interested to know, Chief. When you do your, when you do your evaluation from a, you know, a DUI standpoint, do you go, you don't just do that one census tract, right? You kind of go a little further around? How far do you go out?
So it depends on what, what the stats are that we're looking at. But Casey, you can chime in if I mess up the process here. But part of the litmus test for whether or not it needs to go to a PCN is we look at the, either the reporting district or the census tract as it compares to the rest of the city, and see if it's considered a high crime. Generally, any area in that region is considered high crime. So that's why one of the, one of the tests to get it to this PCN process is that it is considered a higher crime area. If we need to drill further than that, we can get statistics to go further than that. But really to hit the PCN necessity piece, which is a high crime by census tract, and this general area always qualifies for that.
But your report said it's, it's fine. There's no high crime.
The, the definition of high crime from ABC is unique. It's not necessarily aligned with the police department's version of high crime. And really, the PCN in this case is, almost every area is considered high crime based on ABC's definition. But really, what typically triggers it is the overconcentration, and that's, that's generally what we start with. And then PD takes a look at it to see, do we think this is going to cause a problem? Is there existing problems that this may exacerbate? And I think that's kind of the lens that they take on it, as opposed to this ABC's strict definition of it, what they define.
Do they look at the fact that there's four census tracts in this corner? I mean, it's like, it's a cross-section, and four census tracts are right there? Do they look at that, or just the one on the corner, one census tract?
From ABC's perspective?
Yeah.
Yeah, Casey's right. Their definition is interesting. It really usually makes everything hit a high, high-crime area that way. hit a high, high-crime area that way. So we have reporting districts, there's the census tracks, then there's patrol beats as well, we've, we've cut it every single way that we look at it, and usually that, that area right there tends to be a high concentration of people and vehicles, so it's usually a high concentration of crime as compared to the rest of the city.
Well, and you put your DUI checkpoints there, too. Every now and then.
We did look specifically, I don't have the data right in front of me, but we did look specifically with DUIs there, and it does, that, that area does account for about 10% of our DUIs throughout the city, so.
So that, according to this, 34 DUIs in a 12-month period in the Sunrise Marketplace, is that high? Is, I, I don't know.
I, I can't verify those statistics, unfortunately, but we could look into it and provide more information to council if you'd like.
If it was true, would it be high? Would you say that 34 is high for a one-square-mile area?
For one year or one month?
It's one, one year.
One year.
Yeah, I couldn't really tell you without looking at the, the whole, the whole data set, unfortunately.
All right.
I know we have too many DUIs in general, so I'm not surprised, although I'd like to have zero.
Don't mean to ask and shoot from the hip or anything, just get some, get some idea of what's...
Seems like a lot, but that is one of the busiest intersections in the county right there, so there's a lot of traffic that runs through that area.
Thank you very much, Chief. Counselmember Nelson, any questions?
You know, Madam Mayor, as, actually as a member, as a matter of process, I think it'd be a good time to close the public hearing.
I was just wondering if we had more questions before I did that.
Even with the questions part, the public hearing is more once the public stops.
Okay, okay, once the public's done, okay. Close the public hearing. Questions? Any more questions before we do comments? All right, then we're ready for comments. I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. I am sympathetic to the entrepreneurial mindset and, and wanting to open up a new business in the city. I'm hesitant because there already are so many liquor stores in that area, and if we don't pass it tonight, I do encourage you to find another location in the city.
My comment is, I, I didn't realize that this particular, we, the one that we had for Amazon Fresh was like, it was pretty much a slam dunk, there really wasn't much feedback from the community as far as that particular PCN goes. So I, I do find the, the, the number of people who showed up to a council meeting compelling. And so I'm gonna, at this point in time, I, I'm gonna oppose granting the PCN.
Yep, that's my medal. All right, my comments are a little more lengthy. First off, I want to acknowledge that, you know, there is substantive concerns about, that have been raised by community members regarding this application. I want to be clear, though, the proposal technically meets all regulatory requirements, and that includes full compliance with city regulations, public safety considerations, overall community benefit from an economic standpoint only, not speaking from the community standpoint, and appropriate location operation plan that includes enhanced security measures. The California Business and Professional Code is very clear that we cannot deny a permit based on protecting existing businesses from competition. A no vote for my colleagues here on such grounds directly contradicts state law, and we don't want to really, you know, go down that rabbit hole if possible. However, I want to be clear, I find myself unable to make a determination at this time. The ABC regulations show off-sale for two licenses, we currently have five in the census track, and it's over-concentrated. We don't know the potential long-term impacts of that over-concentration, and the community impact about that deserves to have a more robust discussion. I also want to emphasize that when we do have a vote, I will be abstaining, and it's not related to concerns about competition, it's explicitly about the prohibitive by state law, so a no vote would not be a correct vote, in my opinion. So I just want to feel with these factors, I feel that an affirmative decision without additional information about the, the level of over-concentration and really focusing on that, that discussion with our broader community development goals is the appropriate way to go.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I really do sympathize with the applicant here, you know, we, we are very open to businesses thriving in our community, and new businesses, being welcome to new businesses. And so looking at not only the opposition, but the oversaturation, technical oversaturation, and the, you know, the, the actual resistance by the community and fellow surrounding business owners, it makes it very difficult for us because we do want to welcome such a creative business such as yours. And I have to echo our new council member, Nelson's sentiments of Citrus Heights is still open for businesses, you just may need to find another location in the city.
Just, I want to thank everyone, it's not, it doesn't go unnoticed that we have such a huge turnout of public comment. I think it's, kudos to all you who come to participate in government, we don't often get feedback from our community, and when we do, we need to listen. And listening to the community, and there were some people who came up with very good arguments, and I moved by those arguments, I moved by the fact that, you know, when we were doing the cannabis public hearings, people came and said, it's not who we are. And to me, to justify this business, it's got to be who we are, and I'm not sure that I'm, I want to concentrate all the liquor at this corner, you've got so many within 1,000 feet of each other, so there's not a, a public necessity to have another one. And I, I don't see a necessity. The last time I remember we turned one of these down was when Food Max wanted a 21, and the public came out, and we denied it. And we denied it because there was enough liquor stores right around Food Max, there was a couple, and so we, we thought, you know what, the neighborhood does not need more liquor stores. And so this is a, up to city council, it's, it's a letter of public necessity and convenience. Is it convenient and necessary? And I don't think it is. And so I do think it's an okay idea to have it somewhere else, as Mary Jane said, and it would be a cool thing to have high-end whiskey someplace else, and it's just not in a high-concentrated area. There's got to be some parts of our city that if you wanted to be in Citrus Heights, that there, there's a location for you. I agree with the guy who said that Citrus Heights is not the $10,000-a-bottle bourbon store, and, and probably isn't. I mean, we just, you know, we thrift stores, we drive-through, fast foods, and so we, we are not the $10,000 bourbon people. So I, I don't know that it fits our community, and, but I don't see the need or the necessity. So are we voting no on this?
Mayor, I do want to address Council, Councilmember Middleton's point, and I do want to address this with our city attorney. It's my understanding from the staff report that this is not, we don't have to have a legally binding reason to deny this. What Councilmember Middleton suggested that we may need, we could potentially draw some kind of action if we vote no, is, what is your feeling on that?
My feeling is, if your no vote is because of a competition issue, that could be a problem. If it is because of oversaturation, in terms of the area, you think it's just not good for the community, not convenient, that, that would be a legally permissible opposition justification.
I simply don't find this a necessity. I don't think that we're, I don't think we've met the test, for me, that this is a, a necessary, either for convenience or any kind of community necessity.
And I, I believe that's a legally justifiable reason. If you're to say it's because you're trying to protect businesses, other businesses, that would be problematic.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was pretty clear, my statement, just don't say it's for competition reasons.
I don't think anyone did. Okay, so our comment's done, then let's...
More comments?
Does anyone want to move to approve the letter? I don't hear any motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll bite the bullet, let's, you know, I want to move to not approve the letter of necessity. Just, just bite the bullet here.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
Mary Jane seconds.
This is to not...
The motion to not approve.
Not approve.
The PCN. Let's do a roll call vote.
There we go.
Make it clear.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
No, you're going to vote yes on not approving?
We, Lord Jesus, we understand it.
It's a yes to not approve, or is it a...
We're doing a roll call vote.
We are, but you have to understand the motion before you vote on it.
I did, that's what I, that's what I said, is we're...
She made a motion to not...
Not approve.
To not approve. I'm voting no to not approve this.
Okay.
Yes, wait a second.
Right, that's right, you're going to say yes, that's right.
Bum, bum, so, so...
This is what they do when we have propositions on the ballot, they always make it so that your no vote is yes.
Okay, so I'm going to vote yes on not approving.
There you go.
There we go, okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Yes.
And Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
But, like, I, I really want to encourage the applicant to look for another spot.
Yes.
It's not a bad business, it's just in the wrong location. One that isn't so saturated.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item.
Next item. Does anybody need a break? You guys want a break? Okay, council wants to take a five-minute break, and then we'll resume with the next item. David, he's going to be, he's going to do, oh, he's going to be there next Monday. Can we resume our meeting, please? Everybody take their little seats, thank you. This is the bare bones, these are the people that count, you know? Okay, so our next item is another public hearing, right? Okay, so I'm going...
Mayor, I'll go ahead and call the next item.
Okay, why don't you do that?
So the next item is public hearing number 16, the subject is Stock Ranch Guide for Development Amendment, Design Review Permit, and Use Permit for Starbucks. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution finding that the previously adopted EIR, ERI addendums, and negative declaration are the appropriate environmental documents for Starbucks at Stock Ranch project, and no further review is required. Move to approve an amendment to the Stock Ranch Guide for Development to allow extended operating hours for fast casual and drive-through restaurants, as outlined in the staff report. Move to approve the design review permit for the proposed coffee shop, and move to approve the use permit for proposed coffee shop with drive-through service located at 6970 Auburn Boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. Tonight, you'll hear from Stephanie about the proposed drive-through Starbucks there at Stock Ranch. You're probably asking, why are we hearing this? Because normally, this would just go to the Planning Commission, but in this case, the Stock Ranch Guide for Development had a restriction on hours that started at 6:00 a.m., and Starbucks all over town opened about 5:00 a.m. or earlier. So in order to do that, they requested modifying the specific plan by moving up the hour by one hour to, to the 5:00 a.m. So that's why you're hearing about it. Planning Commission reviewed it a couple of months ago and recommended unanimously approval to the City Council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Hello again. Like Casey mentioned, my name is Stephanie Louie, Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department, and tonight I'll be presenting the Starbucks at Stock Ranch at 6970 Auburn Boulevard. So the project includes a request to amend the Stock Ranch Guide for Development related to drive-through restaurant hours of operation. It also includes to approve the use permit associated with the drive-through use, and then, as well as approve the design review permit. Again, like Casey mentioned, this was approved, presented to Planning Commission in October, and was recommended approval to City Council. So this is the project location within the Stock Ranch SPA, or Stock Ranch Special Planning Area. This parcel is known as Pad 7. The parcel is adjacent to the, to Auburn Boulevard and is located within the SPA in the district known as the Auburn Commerce District. The Stock Ranch SPA is currently developed with two major box retailers to the south and a restaurant in commercial uses to the west of the property. Here is the site plan. The project includes the construction of a 2,300-square-foot drive-through coffee shop with landscaping and improvement plans, as well as onsite trash enclosure. The building offers approximately 750 square feet of indoor dining area, as well as a 716-square-foot outdoor dining area. The project meets and exceeds the minimum drive-through circulation standards, providing adequate space for vehicle stacking and queuing. The minimum stacking length required for the aisle to ordering is 120 feet. The project's providing 170 feet, and that proposed length is even more due to the double drive-through entrance. The project design also provides pedestrian connectivity by adding to the existing walkways in the Stock Ranch Plaza. So this slideshow shows entry points to the site and possible access to the Starbucks through the various drive aisles. The original proposal for the Stock Ranch SPA included an environmental study, which included a traffic analysis for the entire Stock Ranch Plaza. This also included and accounted for the drive-through use in this location. Here's a mock-up of the building elevations. The design of the building meets the development standards in the Guide for Development by using a combination of accent materials such as brick, metal, and wood accents. The project also provides onsite furniture and shade structures for the outdoor patio dining area. So like we mentioned, why we're here today is because the applicant is requesting an amendment to the Stock Ranch Guide for Development, which sets standards and regulations for the Stock Ranch SPA. Just as kind of an overview, the Guide for Development was written in the mid-2000s, the guide includes design standards, specific land use designations, and limits on hours of operation. There were concerns about onsite noise and traffic particularly impacting nearby residential areas. This led to standards such as a limit of one drive-through in the SPA, a requirement of a use permit review for drive-throughs, and restricted hours of operations. The applicant is requesting to amend the Guide for Development's drive-through hours of operation by one hour, changing the allowable opening time from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. The applicant is requesting this change to create consistency with other Starbucks drive-throughs with, throughout Citrus Heights, all of which open prior to 6:00 a.m. So the existing limit of the hours of operations was added to the guide to address residents' needs before any tenants were actually in the Stock Ranch area. So this includes adjacent shops, 11 Building, and so a noise analysis was completed and included in the staff report, confirming that the proposed drive-through operations comply with the city's noise ordinance and will remain below current, current ambient noise levels from Auburn Boulevard. So some notable conditions of approval include that the applicant will enter into an operating agreement with the city. This addresses all requirements of the permit and the Guide for Development. This includes complying with the hours of operation, trash pickup and delivery times, and then, and maintenance of the overall exterior appearance. And due to the location, the applicant should provide screening by means of a low wall and landscaping to minimize the stocking area from, the stacking area from the street. We've received a letter of support from the property owner, John Stock, for this proposal, and then we also received a comment from a member of the community regarding concerns over pedestrian safety at the intersection, as provided as Attachment 8 in the staff report. And with guidance from our city engineer and from GSD, a condition has been added to address this concern, and that amended condition was provided to you on your dais today. In the green. So these are the recommended motions. Members of staff, as well as the applicant, are here if you have any questions.
Question for you, not that it's overly germane, but I do have a question about Starbucks on Sylvan Corners, which is also a drive-through.
So as of right now, I think the applicant speaks more about that, but we don't know the status of what's, with the drive-through on.
That, that question was asked by Planning Commission as well, I think the applicant is well-prepared to answer what they know, but the short story is, they don't know at this point what, but there's no closure plans at this time.
Okay.
That's just a general kind of comment, because that was exactly what I was going to ask. It's a two-minute drive from there to Walmart. It's a 10-minute walk, and we already have our kids like running across four lanes of traffic, right? I'm just, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned. Like, I know the project meets all the specifications, but I'm really starting to worry about, let's just use the term everyone else is saying, oversaturation.
Can you tell me what's on this green paper? So I have to take time to, take a break to read it.
Yeah, so the concern raised by the resident was.
I read the concerns. What's the.
So it adds advanced stop bars, so cars are stopped before the, the crosswalks. So to make it, so the cars are stepped back further, not, their bumpers won't enter the crosswalk ahead of, ahead of stopping, so that's, that's kind of what a, what the.
On Auburn Boulevard?
On the private driveways.
What about Auburn Boulevard? Is, she's trying to, I think, cross the street from the housing, and then she goes off, gets to the median, and then goes again, is that, is that?
Yeah, Director Cave, and I talked with her, and the concern was the private driveways after talking it through with her. That was where she was having the most conflicts.
Oh, okay, so she can get across Auburn Boulevard, but not the driveway?
That was our understanding, yeah.
Okay.
Can you just walk me through a little bit? Because I go to the Costco there, and there's that one little weird turn that you can kind of cut through and, right before you get to Crumble, before the light. How is, yeah, there we go, thank you for that. Were there any studies done about that particular impact? Because that, that turn is always just a mess there.
Can you clarify which turn?
It'll be.
It's this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, in terms of the right out into that intersection, is that what you're referring to?
No, no, I guess, what is this? Further up on my side towards the right, where it's a two-way, a two-way street here coming in, right up at the top right corner of the screen where I'm, if I'm looking at it.
Oh.
Here, this one, there's a little turn, like, what do you call those things? Where you know, you kind of sit and you wait, and traffic clears through and you zip through?
Pork chop?
Yeah, a pork, there you go, there we go. That's, that is, that's actually the term for it, yes.
The pork chop at, sorry, at the driveway, there's not a pork chop, is?
It's one further down, it's like right after you cross, after you pass Sylvan, and the next little area, you can take that turn in to turn into and go directly straight to Walmart.
Right. The driveways were looked at by the General Services Department and are consistent with our standards. There's no change proposed, the trips are relatively small in comparison to what the center was designed for, and it's consistent with, with what was assumed under the EIR.
Okay, you guys are the experts.
One, one more question for you, Casey. Is that center red line a new driveway proposed? I just can't recall if that's existing.
There's an existing driveway that will, is between the Crumble building, we'll call it, and the proposed Starbucks, so it's an existing one. It's not as heavily used as the other driveways at this point. But in terms of future build-out, it'll continue to get more, more used.
Got it, thank you.
Do I got a question with regard to the landscaping on the far-right side of the, of the site plan? Those on the very end, I'm thinking about screening for the speaker. Is there, are those specified shrubs there? Are they small ground level? Are they, is there any way we can have some screening whether those are tall enough to where they might absorb some of the sound and not let the sound carry all the way over to the neighborhood?
So that's what the noise study, what was in the noise study of what they measured for the neighborhood across the street. There is a noise level, a certain decibel that they have to adhere by. There's also additional signage that they'll post in the drive-through for customer noise levels as well. So that was something that was studied with the noise analysis, that the ambient noise and the noise that's going to be caused by the drive-through will not affect or be louder than what's already existing.
I'm just thinking about 5:00 a.m., where there's not a lot going on there.
Yeah, as Stephanie mentioned, they did look at that, and still the ambient noise is pretty low, or pretty high at that point. But the condition of approval to add the screening and low wall for screening is meant for along Auburn Boulevard, but certainly something we can, can include as part of that condition is, is having some vegetation, maybe a little bit more robust vegetation there to help screen to what you're just.
What time does the Sylvan Corners Starbucks open? What time does it?
I think that's at 5:00 a.m. as well.
A lot of them do open at 4:00 though, for the drive-throughs.
Two questions, Kelsey.
I have a question, if, if you could take your little pointer and show me where the, the drive-through enters and exits? I, I couldn't figure it out on the.
On this one, or did you want the other one?
Whatever one you think expresses it best.
Okay, so the drive-through entrances will come through here, which by the green. These are the two drive-through entrances?
Two lanes.
Two lanes, yes. For stacking, and then the exit is out here.
There's no queuing going on.
And where's the outdoor area? So the cars go by the outdoor area, which is where?
Right here.
Oh, right in the middle, oh, okay.
Yeah, so you can see it from this one too. This is the two drive-through lanes.
Okay.
Stacking, exit, and then the outdoor area is here.
So two lanes go into one?
Correct.
So one window takes your order, but two lanes? So there isn't going to be a buildup, is that why? So there's a buildup?
It does alleviate buildup, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, any questions for, for staff? Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing, Amy, you have a person with a, yep, please read that.
Yes, so I have one written public comment, and it's from Alfred Sanchez, and he states, "If Starbucks wants to have two coffee shops a few blocks apart, that's fine. As long as the new one doesn't have a drive-through, allowing a drive-through at that location would not be a good idea. I understand we need the tax dollars, but please use common sense." And that concludes the written comment.
Okay, and as far as drive-throughs goes, one is allowed in the plan?
That's correct. When Stock Ranch Guide was initially approved, they called for one and one only.
And that's going to be the one, okay. Then what's, any other public comment? I'll close.
The, Mayor, the applicant's here as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I quite forget the applicant. We're so hap, we're so happy to say yes on this, I think. Want to go home? Applicant, where are you?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name's Elizabeth Valerio from Valerio Architects. I'm here to represent Starbucks on their new project at Auburn and Stock Ranch. They are specifically excited to, I, I know that Starbucks has another drive-through in Citrus Heights, but they understand the demand for their services. So one of the reasons that they are locating here, another drive-through, is to, and that was one of the questions from Councilmember, to alleviate any impact or, or traffic, an impact for that specific site. And, you know, this is a great site. Starbucks is eager and excited to be at this location, especially with their new design and murals and landscaping and so forth. So it, it's a, I believe it's a very, you know, an ideal spot for Starbucks, as well as hopefully for the community and the customer base. And that's kind of many, main reason that Starbucks goes into these specific sites is the demand for Starbucks. So I'm here to answer any other questions you may have. Both the planning staff have gone through rigorously and explained precisely exactly what we're proposing. So there is any more I could add to it, except that it's, we're eager to get this project started. Thank you.
Any questions of applicant? So the one in Sylvan Corners stays.
As far as I know, I wasn't told, and again, we're, I don't want to say we're just architects, but yes, we haven't been told any operational issues. But one of the reasons that we open in the past in other cities and areas, that we open two drive-throughs so close to each other, is really to lessen the impact. So one drive-through is very, very popular, everyone uses that, uses that service, and there's going to be the load on the staff, cars backing up, and traffic increase. And so if we open another one nearby, it lessens the impact of the customer base, so they sort of spread out, and it, you don't have as much load on the staff, the drive-through, the traffic.
Are you involved with the Starbucks going in on Auburn Boulevard as well?
Auburn, which Auburn, what, this is Auburn and Stock Ranch.
That was a, a different developer, Madam Mayor, that was involved. Starbucks does kind of contract out to different folks to help.
Oh yeah, no, we have, we have several architects representing Starbucks. So yeah, so we take, we take.
So it's not you?
No, no, it's not mine, so I don't take offense to.
You wouldn't be able to know if that was going to be a drive-through as well?
That would, no, I don't, but. Drive-throughs are becoming very popular now, so.
The one on Auburn Boulevard, almost to the Roseville city limits, is also a drive-through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I can close the public hearing. Any comments from Councilmembers, otherwise entertain a motion?
Can I have the motions on the screen, please? Okay, do we have to take these one at a time, or?
Yes, we do take them one at a time, but because these are not ordinances, you could just say move staff approval for motion one, as opposed to reading the whole thing.
Okay, great. Move staff approval for motion one.
Second.
Councilmember Schaefer and Councilmember Middleton seconded for your notes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And move approval for motion number two.
Second.
Go ahead, let's take turns.
Councilmember Schaefer and Vice Mayor Lopez Taft, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, none, abstained, none, passes.
Move approval for motion number three.
Second.
There we go.
I'm glad you girls take turns. Councilmember Nelson seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, passes. Motion number four.
Move approval, motion number four.
Second.
We haven't too much fun. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, abstained, no, passes. That's it. Welcome. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 17. The subject is Ordinance Amending Citrus Heights Municipal Code, Chapter 42, relating to floods. The recommendation is to introduce for a first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of an ordinance, amending Chapter 42 floods of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. In the interest of respecting your time and the lengthy evening, this, you have a detailed staff report in front of you. The city intends to achieve some flood insurance discounts from FEMA, and we are in the midst of joining their community rating system program. And as a part of that, in order to get more than 5% flood insurance discount, we do need to update our code to reflect some higher level of standards. The ordinance is laid out in front of you, and I'm here to entertain any questions you may have.
Anyone have questions?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft has a question.
So does this, does this expand our floodplain?
This action does, does not. The, the flood maps or the flood insurance rate maps were recently amended by FEMA themselves in February of this year. But this has no effect on the extents of our floodplain, nor does city or staff have any determination what that floodplain mapping is.
Okay, because I know our, our residents, and me in particular, are very interested in things that might affect our homeowner's insurance. We don't want to impact our, our residents unnecessarily. Thank you.
And just to be clear, it makes it easier for people to get flood insurance by doing this?
In essence, what, what it would do is a blanket discount for anyone within the city, including the city itself, who wish to obtain flood insurance.
Assuming they qualify.
Anyone qualifies for, for flood insurance. If you own a building, you're welcome to and actually encouraged, whether you're in the floodplain or not. One of my slides uncovers that, but with respect to your time, we'll keep it brief.
And just for like the record, you said we're trying to get more than just a blanket, like 5%. Does there, was there, can you tell us what the maximum is, or what that scale is?
Yes, great question, Councilmember. So currently, the city receives 0% discount because we are not a member of the community rating system, but we have expressed our interest and are in negotiations with FEMA. If we do not amend our code, our, our code provisions today, we will be limited to a 5% discount total. And certainly staff is hoping to achieve a little more than that.
Perfect, yeah, thank you for that.
It says discounts raised from 5 to 45 range. What, what puts it up at the 45?
Very significant level restrictions, as well as hydraulic studies. So at that point, we would be establishing our own floodplain, which may be much more extensive than the 100-year storm or the 1% storm that FEMA uses. That amongst heavily regulating any new development, as well as purchasing properties within the floodplain.
Okay.
Okay.
Glad we went and bought that, or got, took that open space then. It's on the floodplain.
Okay, any questions on this topic? Okay, is there a motion page again? Do you want to push the?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So now, Council, this time, because it is an ordinance, you need to read the title of the ordinance, which is the second part of that. An ordinance to the City Council, that's the only thing you got to read.
Like they make a motion to introduce a first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of ordinance number 2024, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, amending Chapter 42 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, passes. Thank you.
Okay. Department reports.
Next item, please.
Next item is department reports, and there are none. So the next item is city manager items.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, and Vice Mayor, members of the Council. Congratulations, Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Schaefer on your seating tonight as Councilmembers. I do have a few updates here. One, happy to report that we received a, quite a large grant. This is a pro-housing incentive grant. This is a grant that our Community Development Department, specifically our Planning Division, has been working very hard on. And we were recognized, if this Council may remember, in 2022, there was a pro-housing designation, an adoption of that resolution, and that meant we had some policies that were consistent with a pro-housing city. And by doing that, we get some awards. So we were awarded an incentive award in 2024 of $960,000. We just signed off on, on receiving those funds. So kudos to the team on that. This funding is planned to be allocated to the Habitat for Humanity Sayonara Drive Homes. Those are the 26 units of ownership housing that are anticipated in early 2025 for construction, and that's, again, replacement housing that the city is working with Habitat for Humanity on, on getting done. I had a city manager message that went out to the community just recently. And for those that may not receive that message, you can go to our webpage, and under the connected section on the front page, you can sign up for city newsletter updates, and you'd receive messages like this. This one was really designed on having a safe and secure shopping environment and reporting out on some advancements that our team and our police department have been making in ensuring that the Citrus Heights businesses in particular are seeing advancements relative to our organized retail theft grant operations that we've been running through, some real progress on that. And then we also had the voters approve Prop 36, which will also be helpful to curb some of the behaviors that have been a challenge relative to retail theft and, and things of that nature. So a message on that, if you're interested in reading it. The tree lighting, this was talked about, but a few pictures from the tree lighting that, I mean, it was a great time. You can see Santa there, looking in the eyes of a child, pretty, pretty nice. The council up there, we had the choir from Lichen, our staff team that made this happen, and blow-ups, and that, that was a really good time, a fantastic event. We had, I'd say, at least a couple of thousand people there, but a lot of happy people, a lot of great compliments. I really appreciate the team's effort on executing that and the council supporting it. A couple of Citrus Heights Police Department retirements. Officer Jeremy Hatchell served for 24 years. He's retiring. And then also our dispatcher Sandy Buller, 30 years of service within the dispatch service. So two members that had been part of our team for a course of their career for some time. We thank them for their service and wish them well in their retirement. time, they're, we thank them for their service and wish them well in their retirement. Off to a new journey. And then the city council meeting, the next meeting will be a recess, the December 25th city council meeting.
You mean we're not going to meet on December 25th?
That's a Christmas holiday, unless you want a special gift on that. So, but yeah, so we won't be having a meeting, then the next city council meeting will be on January 8th in the new year of 2025, if you can believe that. So those are all my comments.
This is it for the year.
Tired. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
I have one. When we do our committee assignments, I'd like to add a committee of two by two with two of us and two park board members, preferably the two that represent Citrus Heights, and some of them are from Antelope. And I wonder if I could get a second for that?
I'll second that.
And if so, would you, you know, contact Park and see if they're willing to put up, then when people choose their committee assignments, somebody may want to sit on that committee. But Jay Evans said today that he resigned. He was one of the Citrus Heights people, so I don't know if Rosario will appoint someone, you know, how soon she gets to her appointments or not. So we'll see. Maybe we could, you know, set it, and then when they get their people together, then they can send two.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll reach out right away.
And you explained everything to our new council member, how these subcommittees work, the fire and the school and all that other stuff, okay.
Yeah, and I think that'll be at the next meeting, is that right? City Clerk, Van? But we'll, we'll reach out to them, so we can kind of be prepared for that, that meeting, where those appointments are made in January.
You think it's a good idea, guys?
That's a great idea.
Okay.
I don't think we need to bring that back as a future action items, just something we'll reach out to them on.
Okay, thanks. With that, we're adjourned.
For the year.
For the...